Good evening, and welcome to the November 17, 2022 Laguna Beach Unified School Board's Regular Business Meeting. It is six o'clock and our open session portion of the meeting is called Order. We established a quorum when we were opening closed session and announced that member Kelly is traveling internationally for work this evening. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance, and Nick, can you lead us in the pledge?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. A report on a closed session by vote of 401, the board took action to approve a stipulated expulsion agreement for student number 2022-23-001. This moves us to 4D, adoption of agenda. Dr. Borri, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we have an incorrect amount listed in the personnel report. For Agnes McManus, the hourly rate should state current hourly rate instead of $47.80.
Thank you. Board members can have a motion in a second to adopt tonight's agenda as amended. Thank you. Student provisional vote. All in favor? I guess the motion carries 401 to adopt the agenda. And this moves us to 5A, public comment, non-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. There, Clerk Osborne there.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to make a public request on behalf of myself and many parents in the community for this board administration to address the recent release of test scores from the California Assessment of Student Progress and Performance. The recent data shows that the percentage of students, pardon me while I read because it's been a busy day. Results show that the recent percentage of students that met or exceeded the standards in our district as a whole dropped 10% on average in math and 5.4% in English. When we look at specific schools, the most alarming is Thurston, whose test results showed there was a 10.9% drop in students at or exceeding standards in math. And even more alarming was an 18% drop of students that met or exceeded standards in math at LBHS. At Elmore, we had an 8.3% drop and also, which is also of great concern. Surprisingly, TOW only had a 2.8% drop, which is great. English is also a huge concern, given that Laguna Beach High School saw a drop of 8.49% in students that were exceeding, that met standards or exceeding standards. And Elmore was at 7.48%. When we compared to neighboring Irvine, their district overall only saw a 4.68% drop in students that were meeting or exceeding standards in math and a 1.64% drop in English. Their highest high school was a 14% drop, but they even had a gain at Creekside High School of 3%. CAPO Unified, the district that we, for a while, with our previous superintendent kept not wanting to be compared to. I'd like to be compared to because they've been celebrated for their ability to mitigate learning loss because they only had a 3.5% drop in students meeting or exceeding standards as a district overall in math and a half a percent drop in English. They attribute their success, wait for it, for their ability to open to in-person learning in the fall of 2020. The superintendent, Kristin Vitale, ruled, sorry, I totally butchered that, says, and I quote, "We work diligently to be the first district in the county to reopen schools in the fall of 2020 because in-person instruction is so vital to student success." This is not, and I told you so, this is here to start finally demanding change because for the longest time, parents have taken to the streets, they've stood before you, they've asked for change, they've asked for you to listen. And more often than not, when the parents are here before you asking for something, it turns out down the road that they weren't wrong. We changed our, they asked for a change in math, you guys put forward a program, parents complained, teachers came in and said something, we ended up changing curriculum at the high school. We have amazing teachers, we have amazing site leadership. Change needs to start and it needs to start at the top. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry.
Are there any additional speakers?
No additional. Would you like to speak? No, it's fine, you can come to the podium, you have three minutes. If you want to do a blue card next time, you can, but you don't have to. Yeah, come forward, it's fine.
Hi. I'm a parent of two kids at, in the district, and I guess I wanted to speak to something that the prior speaker spoke to as well. And that's really something that's just really keeping me up at night from a parent perspective, which is the just massive learning loss that our kids have experienced and do, you know, from the school closures and, you know, I'm sure that behind the scenes, it's a hot topic and I'm not trying to minimize the, I'm sure all, everything that's gone in, all the hard work teachers and administrators have put in to recover that, but I just think from a parent perspective, I haven't felt the sense of urgency that I really would love to see because I really do feel like it's a crisis. I mean, speaking to the numbers, I mean, I kind of looked at the same thing, looking at the smarter balance reports that came out and that, you know, I'm specifically concerned about Thurston because that's kind of my, where my child who has struggled is, is going. And, you know, when you look at the sixth graders at Thurston, 32% of sixth graders didn't meet ELA standards last year and 40% of sixth graders didn't meet standards in math. And I just think that's, it's a crisis, it really is. And it's like, how can we come all hands on deck to address it? And it's, it's more alarming to me too, because when you look back at, I looked at the scores from 2019 and those were 20%. So in math, it was, it went from 20% to 40%. I mean, that just is like, it's a crisis, that's, is how I really view it. And it really does keep me up at night because I have a struggling kid, a kid who struggled academically through this and I'm getting, you know, we can all get our kids help, but I feel like it's, it's a bigger issue and trying to speak for, for all parents of kids and maybe parents that aren't even okay speaking up and you know, it's hard to admit when your kid is struggling. And so I think it's hard to ask for help. And so just kind of wanting to speak up for, for all, all these kids because when you look at it, that's, that's 150 kids at Thurston who aren't meeting, you know, aren't meeting math standards. And I just think that's, it's, it's a crisis and it's just something that we need to, to, to really figure out how to address. And, you know, I don't have the answers for that, but, you know, I think, you know, at Thurston, at least, I know the main, one of the main things they're doing is a boost class, intervention class, and that's wonderful. And, you know, my daughter is doing that, but I think, I believe nine, nine kids at Thurston are doing that. And so I just feel like maybe something's not working there. I don't know how you make it mandatory or I don't have the answers, but I just feel like we need other options maybe because I don't know, I don't, I don't, it's a great class and it's been wonderful, but I don't know, it's clearly not being utilized and I don't know what, I don't know what the answer is for that. And then, you know, I did send an email and, you know, I have reached out about this about a month ago and I know they, that Thurston.
That's, that's three minutes. I'm so sorry to, to interrupt you. Thank you so much for coming forward and sharing your comments.
Any additional speakers, Clerk Osborne?
I have no other comment cards received. I see no one else in the audience wishing to speak.
Thank you, Clerk Osborne. And then for the parents and the speakers who spoke, we had one online as well that was submitted. As long as it's not anonymous, the staff always will reach out if there was a question or something to be answered or addressed, they'll reach out to you and address it. Thank you. This moves us on to item six. Outstanding service in Laguna Beach USD and Clerk Osborne, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to, I pushed the whole table. I'd like to recognize our outgoing Board President, Carol Normandin. Carol has served on the Board of Education for eight years. I've had the pleasure of serving with Carol for the last two years and just wanted to share a little bit about what I've experienced with Carol and then let Member Perry and Member Vickers maybe have a chance to say something as well. But Carol, you know, I've really seen your commitment to creating a sense of equity for all students and you come to that with a real devotion and it shows up in a lot of your work and your comments and your passion. And I think that the Students of the Laguna Beach were lucky to have that and we were lucky to have you on our boards. So thank you very much and Member Perry.
Thank you so much for your service. I know you've spent hundreds and hundreds of hours serving our students and our community. I have.
It's okay, Member Vickers, did you want a chance to say anything?
Sure. Carol, you have really gotten us involved in policy. That was a big project of yours in the last two years and we have made it through all the policies, which is a massive task. I know if anyone has done it before, it's just, it's one of our most important charges. And so it was really critical that we have well-written policies, policies that are current, that are up to date and that we are accountable for. So that you've provided that in addition to everything else that goes on in the eight years that you have served. There's a lot behind the scenes that people don't see when we come to the meeting. I mean, this is what we're responsible to read and be prepared and you are always prepared. So I'm grateful for what you've provided to this district. And I agree with, definitely with Member Osborne, Clerk Osborne, that you have looked out for all students, but I think particularly for any students that are marginalized, which is a very important task. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, I'll keep my remarks short. You know, I think I speak for all of our staff. And our, our union folks, you've, you've always been a champion for students, looked out for staff, been a voice of reason during very challenging times. And, you know, I don't think it's been a journey the last two years, especially the board policies is a great example. When you set your mind to something, we, we, we are accountable and we, we do it. So I really appreciate all of your hard work and dedication to the school district as community. I think we can all say thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your dedication. Eight years is a long time and I know your family is very excited to get you back full-time too. So thank you as well for all of your patience and all the time that she has spent away from you here. And so I don't think that can be discounted in any way. I know the hours that you spend just preparing for meetings on the phone, conversations, meeting, meeting to meet. So again, very appreciative of that and we have a little token we'd like to provide you.
I just want to say I've served with a lot of board members and a lot of board presidents and you're the cream of the crop and I've really enjoyed serving with you. So thank you very much.
I swore I wasn't crying. I didn't call Peggy today because I was like, I'm not going to cry. Thank you for this. Thank you for all the kindness you guys put in my life. And if you want to make me feel important and appreciated even more than you already do, you guys overachieved again, as you do, including the cupcakes, all the little touches. And in my report, I'll say a couple more things, but I also want to say how much I deeply appreciate the people that are here tonight that are going to leave as soon as I go to the next item, we're going to the next item. But especially my, my family and my dear friends, Natalie, Alvin, Peggy, me. We're just helping me process, especially this most difficult last two years, but just, just processing in the background. Really, you all contributed to the growth of the education community here. And, and no one does any of this by themselves. I mean, I even hear Jan talks about, we all have to process and so, thank you guys. And as Dr. Rory said, thank you to my family for all the time that I didn't give to you guys, that I dedicated to all students. And especially for the space of being president over the last two years. And I could have picked better two years to be president. That is on me. But I really appreciate all you guys did and especially during COVID, keeping me, keeping me grounded and helping with language and then adding to Victoria's exceptional ability to keep us organized, allowing to have the gold standards. Because the first thing I did, I was so nervous of working with Victoria, so I looked up the gold standards of running a meeting, which is efficiency, efficacy and the ability to create peaceful discussions to make decisions. It was, it was right there. And so it looked bad, like how do I live up to that? So thank you. Because it would have just been a dark comedy without you. I would have been the one laughing, I think. So thank you, thank you for doing, thanks for the surprising me. Really, like I didn't know, I was like, what is this? For this part on here, so thank you for giving them. And I was gonna take a break, but I got to see everyone beforehand, so. Sure, sure, we could take, we could take a quick, why don't we take just a quick break? It's 6:18, so 6:20, 6:21? Okay, I'm saying quick, I'm saying quick. We are, we are re-coming, it's 6:20, we're moving to seven reports. A quick procedural reminder, there's no public comment on reports per open meeting laws, but for members who have any questions arise from what the hair of the speakers speak about, please contact them directly as they're the experts in their field. And we're going to start up first with Nick, the student board rep, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normandin. So starting off with our elementary schools, Elmore had its first normal Boo Blast since, excuse me, since before COVID. And we've seen other improvements in school culture as well with regards to behavior. And this has been attributed to their PBAS programs, their restorative practices and their student, sorry, their student counseling, which I personally think is very, very important. Counselors are such valuable resources to students, you know, in my personal experience, they've helped me, you know, optimize my class schedule, look and apply for jobs, look and apply for colleges, emotional support and just ultimately make the most of my experience here in the district. So it's, I think it's really important to kind of just learn that value early on so that they can take advantage of those resources once they get to the high school. They are also wrapping up their first cohort of the cohort or the intervention program and they're wrapping up the fall session of their after-school programs. School Power has done an amazing job of setting high expectations for instruction, for instructors and students. And both sites will be growing their programs coming into spring. Moving on to Thurston, TMS recently held a school site council to review the progress on last year's goals and to set the goals coming into next year. And it appears actually that there's students that are interested in pursuing sustainability and environmentally friendly goals, including establishing a green team and kind of advocating for a proper disposal of food waste. I know this is a goal that a lot of us here on the board have cared about. So it's great that, you know, a lot of our students are taking that to heart as well. And then lastly for Thurston, there was a big turnout at the sports swap, which was a couple Saturdays ago. There's a line of members out the door and just a huge thank you to our PTA, our local sponsors and our families for making it possible. Last but not least, the high school, I had the pleasure of attending a Breaker Leadership Meeting at the beginning of this month where we gathered the presidents of all LBHS clubs to discuss diversity and inclusion on our campus. We had some really productive conversations regarding what we can do to be even more inclusive. I personally really like the idea of having our Breaker Leadership Meetings because it's a way to constantly pursue improvement on our campus. And I think our club leaders are the best people to kind of gather since they're, in my opinion, the most proactive students and they're most likely to take those goals to heart and put them into practice in a natural way. And then the Breaker Leadership Meetings will be happening once a quarter. Moving on, moving on to sports, fall sports are wrapping up, boys' water polo season has ended. The boys' football team is actually having a big CIF semifinal home game tomorrow. So I look forward to hopefully seeing some of you there. And then the winter sports will be kicking off soon as well. Last week, LBHS had their Flow Week. So we had a bunch of different, different guest speakers to speak to each class to raise awareness about the current state of the environment. We had Evan Marks, who's an ecology center leader, he spoke to our freshmen. We had Rich German, a local conservationist, conservationist, he spoke to our sophomores. Shawn Thompson was actually a professional surfer and he spoke to our juniors about the ocean. P McBride was a national, or is a National Geographic photographer. And he spoke to his seniors about his amazing story of following the Colorado River to its end, it actually no longer touches the ocean. And he told us some, some really, really captivating stories of just what he's seen, you know, traveling the environment. So, yep, there was just a great balance. All of the guest speakers were amazing. There's a great balance between being informative and being engaging. I know that, you know, for some students, it's kind of tough to sit through those assemblies, but I think the speakers all did a wonderful job. And right now is the senior class, you know, everyone's going through the motions of college applications. It's a time of high stress for a lot of 12th graders right now. But I think it's also, you know, to find that silver lining, it's, it's highlighted some of LBHS's most important resources. And that's something I mentioned a little bit earlier, which is our counseling. Mrs. Gregory, Mrs. Tacklin and our College and Career Center have been super, super helpful with just all students. They've helped me, you know, like I said, look and apply for schools and answer any, you know, last minute impromptu questions. And the whole process would be just so much more stressful without them. So, you know, even though students are stressed out right now, it's a natural thing, it happens every year. But I truly feel that LBHS is doing the most that they can to offer the resources to make that process as easy as possible. This Tuesday, I got to sit in on the superintendent's student advisory council. We had some very productive conversations as we explored the benefits of a eight-period bell schedule. So this would allow students to take 32 classes instead of just 24. We had a theater production that happened last weekend, dance promotions can be, as a promotion, dance production that's going to be happening this week, this weekend. And we have holiday performances coming up as well. So it's been a super eventful month for LBHS and the district, but everything has gone super smoothly. Thank you.
Wow, thank you so much for that report. So that was a lot. Next, we have the bargaining. First is Nikki, and I'm not sure her last name for me, so I don't mess it up.
Romano.
Romano.
Like the cheese.
Okay, I was going to say that and I thought, oh.
Thank you for having me. So we are currently, CSCA is currently working on a membership drive and getting our new employees signed up in the union. As of right now, we have 75% participation. So that's 118 members out of 157 classified staff. We just elected and solidified our new board. So Thesa Zuziak is our president. I am your vice, the vice president. Chrissy Langgraf is the treasurer. Bundy Kinder is our recording secretary and Elizabeth Liggins is our communications officer. We have some, Thesa attended the CIBA conference along with Mike Conlin just recently and they learned a lot in participating in workshops. Instead of all the speakers were of great quality. We will be surveying our members at the end of this month to gather their input for our negotiations that start in March. And then we can start our sunshine letter in the process to be ready to open those negotiations. And we would like to thank you for your service.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the report. Next up is one of my favorite, Sarah Hopper.
Good evening. Well, I'd like to congratulate you, Carol, for completing eight years of service on the school board. Karen Laguna, I think you are a very brave and courageous individual. I appreciate the leadership that you've provided through the years, especially through the COVID times and online school board meetings. You led with a strong moral compass. You held your head up high, you stood by your decisions with transparency, even if they were not always popular. You never raised your voice when you could have. Instead, you were always kind, encouraging, making student-oriented decisions, supporting teachers and improving the efficiency and governance of the school board meetings during your tenure as a board member. And I very much look forward to celebrating you and your graduation from the school board tomorrow. You definitely deserve a big celebration and congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you so much. Is that your report?
That's my report. That's all I have to say. And I thought that was plenty.
Thank you for, thanks, Sarah. And next is, do we have our school resource officer? They're not here. Okay, so then we're going to move on to Dr. Borri, floor is yours.
I'll keep mine brief. I know we have a lot of presentations. You know, we've been very busy. I think one of our bigger projects is our ongoing facilities master plan update and I appreciate members for being a part of that. We also offer sustainability work and again, appreciate members for being a part of that work as well. But we've been, you know, getting around to all the school sites as we're trying to figure out how to, what priorities we might have for facilities master plan update to bring to the board as a whole sometime in January, February. The architects have been very busy coming up with different ideas. And I think, you know, the goal as we continue this work is really just to explore all potential options that might exist at our school sites and then bring it back to the board for consideration so that we can then put dollars to projects and prioritize what it is the board wants us to move forward with. So again, I know it's a lot of time, you know, being a board member is a lot of commitment. Again, thank you, Carol, for your commitment to spending so much time and energy for an unpaid position. And for the rest of the board as well, for continuing to do that, two-hour meetings, not counting these ones, but, you know, when we're getting together to walk a campus and I don't know that folks understand all the commitment and time that you all put in. So while I'm thanking Carol, I want to thank all of you as well. And to Nick's point, we've been meeting, we have our regular superintendent advisory meetings, the most recent one was just kind of iterating around different ideas regarding schedules, what's working there, what's not working, what are some different things that the feedback the students have. And I love it because you can just let, ask one question and give them 40 minutes and they talk. And I come up with all different ideas and provide a lot of great, you know, insight into what the, what's the journey like for students in their classrooms. And so again, Dr. Allman was there listening and taking notes. And so, you know, as we continue this, our journey of always looking to improve and continuously improve, this is something that we want to as an organization do. And I appreciate the high school looking at what it is that we're doing there and how we're supporting our students and what tweaks we might need to make to continue to be better at that. And we, unfortunately, I'll, I'll take mics because I know he doesn't have a report, but I'll take, we weren't able to celebrate Megan Bashkran at the Teacher of the Year Dinner at the Disneyland Hotel. I appreciate Carol coming along. We did go so that we were there to represent. But I think she was otherwise busy at that time. We got a picture of her in the hospital getting ready for delivery. So it was quite a night for, for her. So I hope at one point we'll be able to continue to recognize Megan. It's a bummer she missed out, but that's a great celebration, right? And, you know, we have a lot of things upcoming. Obviously, the board, several members going to CSBA and, you know, look forward to spending some time there and doing, continuing our learning as a, as a school board and as a governance. So that's my report.
Special development keeps us current, right? So Mr. Dixon, do you have, their floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normandin. I'll be brief. We did have our Sustainability Task Force meeting as Dr. Valoria had mentioned. I do appreciate all the members who came. We have a large group and they're not always able to make every meeting. But we get a good cross-section of all of our staff, parents and students. And this time we had a student, a high school student at the meeting as well as parents who seem to be the largest contributors. And we started the ideation process for projects that we can start looking into. So we're moving along. We are still developing and finalizing our report for our baseline data for our district that's going to determine how we get to carbon neutrality. By 2030, we're going to walk with Green Schools National Network in the next weeks to finalize that report, the insight report for us. And so we're looking forward to that and we'll keep you updated as we go through that, obviously. In addition, today, actually, we had a really good meeting with the Emergency Preparedness Inter-Agency Collaborative, EPIC. And that's our South Orange County group of multiple districts, colleges. So we have Irvine Unified, Newport Mesa was there, University of California Irvine, Irvine Valley College, Saddleback Valley, the list goes on. We had representatives from police and fire from all of those agencies as well, all the local cities. And what they did, we found incredibly valuable and they walked through post-incidence. And what they did, we found incredibly valuable and they walked through post incident scenario where you get into reunification. We've talked a lot about reunification over the years because it is very difficult and complicated. And they were able to talk through from their perspective, what is police gonna do at this point in time, moving into what is fire gonna do? What is the Orange County Healthcare Agency's role in this? What is Orange County Department Ed's role in this? And Victoria, Ryan Zeta, we also had Principal Megan Schuler and our Assistant Principal Daphne Hammer from Thurston there. And it was two hours, so it's a longer drill, but incredibly informative. And I think we've got a lot of great things that we can bring back here, work on locally. And one of the biggest points that I think we we all agree on and we heard today was the importance of educating our families on what the impacts and events could occur with the emergencies. So if our families are aware, you're gonna have less communication issues and there's gonna be, hopefully, increased patience. Because as you know, when you're coming out of an emergency, demand for time is urgent, but knowing that we need to have patience to let the professionals complete their work in a safe manner is also worth. So lots of good ideas that we will be bringing back, hopefully, well, certainly this year, but hopefully sooner rather than later. And lastly, I'll just close with, thank you, your professionalism and your your standards being so high in commitment to serving in this district and our students has been inspirational and we'll miss it. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, Jeff. Mike is the report. Mr. Colin is the report.
No official reports since there's quite a few reports, but just take, just to take a moment. I've had the pleasure of working with you, Carol, going back even before your your board, your board days as a parent at top of the world. So it has been an absolute pleasure and honor working with you as a parent and then all the way through your your leadership at the district. It's just, again, we truly appreciate your leadership and partnership and what you did to support all the students and staff of LBSD. So thank you so much. This is not the end, but you have a new beginning, but it was, it was a pleasure working with you and we continue, we look forward to continue working with you. Take care.
Thanks. Chad.
Thank you. I will echo what they've said. And I, and then just a very quick, short report for myself. This week we finished, we're finishing up our cohort two for unit design PD that we're doing with teachers. And and I was thinking that in the light of the flow week that's also going on, that we just finished up at the high school last week around environmental stewardship and making these connections across such an important topic, but across subject areas. And it was nice to see the unit design align with that work that our teachers are doing, something that the high schools took the lead on several years ago before the pandemic. This really important, authentic, real world impactful learning experience for students. And then when we're working through a unit design PD, we could see similar units being developed by our teachers all the way down to second grade that was looking at their impact on the community as a second grader. And so it was really impactful seeing those two next to each other the last couple of weeks. And so I just wanted to share that and I appreciate the board's support and and the school's been able to implement that and us also be able to provide that training for teachers. Thank you.
Thank you all for everything you report on. And I know it's not just your work, it's everyone, all your teams, everyone believes. Please extend the board's gratitude always to to your employees and all the work they're doing. And that's such great news to hear, Dr. Mary. And then Fia, next up is seven F, that's a report from Principal Vidal for Thurston Middle School. Florious.
My good works. Perfect. Thank you. Well, before I get started, I would like to start with a little gratitude. And say, Carol and the board, I just want to say thank you for your advocacy, your support, your guidance to help bring a lot of our school goals to fruition. I'd also like to thank the district office, Jason, the department leaders and the support staff for always being present, trusting our work, providing us the autonomy and the resources that we need to make sure that our goals come to fruition. My fellow administrators and colleagues for their nonsensical banter, but also sharing their great ideas and pretending to listen to some of mine. And then lastly, my staff, for their passion for this work, their willingness to trust the process, willingness to take risks and push forward sometimes when the challenges seem overwhelming. So I just wanted to pause and say thank you all for your ongoing support. And now for my school goals. So over the last few years, we've done a lot of questioning, self-reflection, research dives, exhaustive debates, sometimes deaths by surveys to fine tune our direction and provide us some momentum for us to all move forward. And we definitely have a strong foundation and I feel that can be seen just by the sheer staff participation that we have and the great number of teams and people that are working to move our goals forward. Of course, our goals are not an exhaustive list, but they definitely represent the big ideas and like our LCAP goals, they build off of the previous year's work. So for goal one, looking closely at college and career readiness, our teams felt was really important to start with professional learning communities. Essentially, when we do collaborate as educators in any form that we want to have research based practices, structures and templates to guide our planning. Secondly, we want to be more prescriptive around our tutorial period. So that, for example, we could simultaneously run support groups as well as enrichment opportunities for all of our students during that rotational time. And then we also felt that it was really important for us to install several layers of monitoring beyond the typical department and grade level planning time to seal as many cracks as possible where we're collaborating with our counselors to over, look at our early warning system and some of the new tools that Mike Morrison and his IT department have developed to help us catch additional students that might need targeted support. And then finally, based on some lessons learned that we had last year with our zero period ELA and math interventions, we wanted to enhance our intervention model within the school day so that it's more accessible to capture a larger percentage of our students who may need that targeted support. In looking at a combination of the LCAP goal two and three around social emotional supports and safe inclusive practices, we wanted to build upon last year's momentum and establish stronger foundations and positive behavior intervention supports. Also looking at training additional staff members in restorative circles as well as look to formalize our student to teacher mentor mentorships through a measurable check in checkout goal setting practice. Bless you. And then as, and finally, as a one off goal, our student leaders expressed a lot of interest in developing a school goal around sustainability and wanting to move to more environmentally friendly practices on our campus and beyond our campus as well as into the community. So I'm excited to share a little bit about that. And it was proud to see them advocate for such a goal. Looking at goal one and focusing in on five critical areas, and here's kind of a brief glimpse of some of those teams that are helped to support those goals. Is we want to start with our professional learning communities. So in the past, it's the last two years, it's been a blend of informal and formal collaboration where there's high level discussions about school business. And then to some really formalized lesson planning and common formative assessment development. And our teachers would tell you that our next growth point would be just to ensure that we have consistency of practice and to have a formalized structure throughout all of our professional learning communities on our campus. So this year, we want to move to standardizing our protocols, setting goals, setting templates and sharing those resources across our staff. In addition to that, we want to have a responsive tutorial model. So rather than students are rotating through six periods on Wednesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays over the course of three weeks, they would actually go through a digital pass system that allows them to have more student flexibility and choice to get the support that they either need or attend an enrichment opportunity like a career talk or a student TED talk or even attend maybe some specialized classes around creative writing and robotics. We have a few schools in mind that we want to go visit that are a few years ahead of us in this game. But we definitely have that as we want to borrow some ideas and collaborate with them to how to bring that to fruition here at Thurston. In addition to that, our tiered counseling supports, amazing team last year, really connected with, you know, students provided lessons around executive functioning and mindfulness, worked closely with really high level tier two and tier three students. It had individual check ins or small group instruction and support. And this year with the added counseling support that we have here on our campus, they're gonna conduct everything as they did before, but with added increased support for all students, having individual check ins with them, conducting strength assessments, utilizing those strength assessments to see how they can so use those skills to be successful at our school as well as looking to be a part of an early warning system monitoring program with us as administrators to monitor students such as attendance rates, behavior, DNF trends and also grade trending too as well. So any students that might be moving from A's to B's, we want to know why that is happening. Any students that are moving from B's to C's, we want to know a little bit more about that story. And so we feel like we can have a little bit better support for all those students to ensure that no student is falling between the cracks. Looking at our intervention system in ELA and math, you know, as I mentioned to you, we had our zero period interventions last year and we had pretty low acceptance rates. It was pretty disheartening to see that we'd have roughly about twenty to thirty percent of our students actually access the intervention being that it's early in the morning for some of those students. So this year we've embedded that within our school day. We've aligned it with some of our elective wheels that we have and to make sure that it's very fluid for students to be, students to be able to go in and go out. And we'll be using, we've also issued intervention leads to help monitor some of that performance data. And as of now, in the initial start of that, we're seeing seventy percent acceptance rates for our students thus far. And then even more robust and fantastic is the after school support. So last year, that's looked a lot like a study hall where we would have one or two instructional assistants that would be roaming through to help any student that wanted to come in, have a quiet space to work and study. And this year we have over six staff members, four teachers, two instructional assistants that are rotating throughout the week, Monday through Thursday, and providing either prescriptive targeted ELA and maths tutoring for students. Or we also have the study hall option too as well for students that wanted to independently study on their own. Some of those measurements are the state issued fidelity integrity assessment, which was done to guide practices for multi-tier systems to support. We'll be monitoring those PLC protocols that are provided with among our staff, ourselves and counselors. Looking at the performance data such as iReady data, grades and CAS scores and especially historical CAS stores to see how these students have performed. And then especially around the area of tutorial models is looking at student created, Thurston created surveys to ask students what areas of interest they might be in, what kind of career talks would you like to to see in here? And then finally, a challenge success survey that which was developed by Stanford University and really looking at different aspects of student engagement on our campus. Not just doing school as behavioral engagement, but really talking about, do they see relevancy? Do they see, are they excited about it? So looking at that effective and cognitive engagement too as well to help measure some of this work. Here are a few examples for goal one. And so, you know, we have a shared Google Drive that we have a standardized protocol and template for all of our PLCs where our staff will be reviewing norms, looking at common goals, setting specific learning targets that they're going to measure. What are the skills that we want our students to have on the outcome of this? What are some of those success indicators that we're going to be looking for? What are some prospective challenges that we might see as we embark down on this road? And then coming back and looking at a lot of those findings, what were some of the things that we came across as we did this and what would be our next steps? And so continually sharing that out, they have access to each other. We're seeing a lot of collaboration, not only within their own department, but across departments as they plan for school wide goals based on some of the iReady information that we received. We also have this grade trending then, and thank you, Mike and his team. This really came out last year because we were very hypersensitive about students failing. And so we were really monitoring DNF lists. But one parent came forward and talked to us about the story of their child and and how typically they were a straight A student, but then now they found themselves being on low Bs and high Cs. And what that uncovered was that the student was struggling with some, some depression and some mental health issues. And we didn't catch it. And so we, I kind of shared that idea with Mr. Morrison and Dr. Valoria. And we talked a little bit about having cycles of inquiry every about two to three weeks to monitor grade slides that we can uncover any potential impacts of of our students. And so we review that information. We find out what the story is as it relates to maybe attendance or whatnot. And then coordinate a plan for those particular students and track them over time. And finally, just monitoring the continuum of supports, you know, we want to know how students are doing in isolation as they're being very, as our staff is being very strategic about tutorial support. We want to know somewhat in isolation how our students are performing in our ELA and boost classes. And we also want to know for some of our students that are attending after school tutoring in isolation, how those things are working. We're also interested in like the combination of the effects. What about students that are receiving ELA and math boost support as well as tutoring? What kind of a trajectory or a performance improvement do we see with that? We've also recently talked about, you know, students, when they exit an intervention, they often just go back into the class. And so we talked about developing kind of this gradual release of support. So what if we were to say after a release of an ELA or boost class, we actually have students that will then attend a four to six week period in specific tutoring in that area that they were struggling with, just to ensure that they're keeping up with their subject area content. And so that is also something that we will be tracking this year and the effects of that too as well. And we're just very appreciative of the resources that we have to make these things happen. For goal two, in behavior, we have a couple of items here as it relates to analyzing behavior trends. And so we'll continue to utilize our Swiss information system, which is a kind of a database that holds all of our behavioral referral rates. Looking at ways to analyze those trends, potentially reteach expectations at the classroom or individual level. And then also make school wide systems changes based on that information. One of those biggest leaps was last year, we had hit about twenty seven percent of our action steps at a tier one level. And going into this year, it's nearly seventy seven percent. And it's just been a completely different vibe from last year. And so that is something that we really appreciate. It's given us an opportunity to develop school wide matrices about behavior. Teaching students the importance of being an up standard at a timely point in the year at the beginning, sharing anonymous reporting as our we tip. And so just, there's multiple layers that we can do to mobilize based on the behavior trends that we're seeing to be more proactive. So we're gonna continue that work. Based on the amount of growth that we've made in our tier one, going from twenty seven to nearly eighty percent, we're ready to start looking at that mentoring ship, that that teacher to student mentorship in tier two. And so we will be looking to develop that in years past, it's been, I should say, the last two years, it's been a bit informal. It looks different classroom to classroom. And this year we want to get a digital database system that actually tracks and monitors that progress. And also, we want to make sure that our students are initiating who their mentor will be. Oftentimes, the check in checkout system is initiated by the teacher. And in some cases, that's probably where the most problematic behavior is happening. And the perception of the students is that maybe that is a punitive measure. And so we want to make sure that, hey, we we understand that you wanna, you need a little addition, a little bit more additional support. And so what mentor would you like to help coach you through this process? So a little minor tweaks that we're gonna do to our tier two system. And then finally, restorative circles, continuing on that pilot work that we started in the spring of last year, having additional staff members be a part of it. And I do have a little, on my next slide, I'll show you a couple of other ideas that we have as it relates to it. Some of those measures, a tier fidelity inventory is a inventory measure that's used through PBIS. We'll continue to look at that and and those action steps as we move forward and develop a more comprehensive system on our campus. Definitely our referral rates and our reinforcement rates. So we want to see lower referral rates as we have more positive reinforcement for our students and more student celebrations. Of course, our school climate survey results as we move through to make sure that we've, students feel connected, supported and have those mentors on our campus. And then, of course, the restorative practices, participation rates of our staff. A really quick example from behind me is you can see the average number of referrals that we had per day, and this is a year to year comparison. Green being last year and blue being this year. And as you look at that, you go like, wow, we have way more referral rates, more way more problematic behaviors than we did last year. That's technically not the truth. We have more staff members utilizing the system and therefore we're getting more behavioral data. And what we, and this is a typical practice that you've read in research is don't be alarmed when you start seeing a climb because that means that more people are actually utilizing the system and it allows us to address it. But what we do want to see is a decline in that as we begin to implement more live school points. Live school points are a point system that students get rewarded for for having great citizenship that they can then use in our student store. And you can see that that quite hasn't had the lift that we're hoping for and roughly about eleven thousand. And you can see that that quite hasn't had the lift that we're hoping for and roughly about 11,000 points per month. So we want to see that grow. And then we also want to increase more student celebrations. Whether that's our new student of the day celebration or our new student of the month specialized breakfast that we have where we're recognizing those silent and vocal leaders. And that's going to be really critical along with the partnerships that we're going to be starting to develop through our mentorship. This year, we're also going to just be focusing on one function of behavior. Those that are students that are trying to obtain peer attention in class. And so we're going to focus in on that area and go, we're going to replace that negative attention with positive attention. With a positive mentor on our campus. And so we're going to be very strategic and prescriptive about. How we develop those mentorships and watch those students and celebrate their successes along the way. And then finally, of course, the restorative circles. We definitely want to see that happen more and more. And brainstorming with Dr. Valoria and many of my colleagues, we thought this would be a great opportunity to start training some of our students. To do circles so that we have some of our student leaders going down to the elementary schools. And talking with those fifth graders as they transition during very pivotal times about what is the middle school all about? Same with Dr. Allman and talking about opportunities for his high school. Students to come down and connect with our eighth graders. And so we think that that articulation is going to be really important. And it's nice to see that it's very student driven. Or could be. And then finally, the sustainability goal. And so this is a very new goal for us. That image is a picture of me working with Mr. Chris, one of the best media guys that I've ever come across. So we were developing a campaign around food waste. It has not been released yet, but we're hoping that this new established green team. Would be willing to use me as an actor and then also build up some of their own matiller as we establish a green team. Analyze some of the practices that we have on our campus and determine some early entry points, which our students already suggested might be, you know, looking at food waste or recycling. We now have this new added resource of consulting with the Green Schools National Network. Where we can learn a little bit about some of that, their journey and and make some adaptations here at our site. And then through the Laguna Beach Coalition, some great community service projects. I know this upcoming weekend, I think Love Laguna is putting something together. And so we've really encouraged our kids to partake in that, sharing live school points. We want them to share their stories with us. And we're hoping that more things like that throughout the year will come about, especially around sustainability and environmentally friendly practices. Being that this is a baseline goal, just starting from scratch here, we're really going to be monitoring the amount of stakeholder engagement that we have. We're really hoping to reduce food waste and increase recycling practices. And then we'll be looking at multiple, multiple, multiple data points for establishing baseline data going into next year. Whether that's the actual amount of recycled material that we get this year, the reduction of food waste or even water conservation and some of the things that are things that we may potentially look at. So. Those are our three goals. We're really excited about it and appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Any questions, comments?
Thank you so much. Questions, comments from the board?
Thank you, Joe. Still a lot of it, a lot of information.
I'm sorry.
Appreciate you. Well, I mean that positive. Keeps us well informed and knowledgeable about our schools and what you're doing. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Joe. One thing that popped out about your presentation was you're you're using data really well. And I can tell that you guys are attempting to document and define behavioral issues and then address them based on some of the data or. Document and use live school points and and get that trending in the right direction. You mentioned the homework club and trying to shift that to a tutoring model. And I was wondering, are you tracking attendance there?
Yes.
Or is it possible?
Yep, we're trying, we're not only tracking attendance, but we're tracking what the students utilize, the resources they utilize when they're there.
Okay.
So whether that's just, I'm doing it independently, or I actually received math tutoring support that day, or I actually received. You know, English tutoring support that day.
Okay, great. And I also really appreciated the the grade trending and some of the.
Yeah.
Information in there because I know we hear from the community a lot. Sometimes it's not a failing student, but it's an A student going to a C student. It can be just as alarming. To parents. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Lots of wonderful information. I wondered how excited students are about doing the surveys.
It depends on how many you throw at them and and how you word it and what it's about. I mean, it was really interesting when we we sent one recently out about. Career topics and thinking about wanting to have career talks on our campus. Nepres is this tool that apparently our district has had for quite some time. I was not very familiar with it. Kelly Schreer says that there is just a plethora of different speakers out there that can help. And so we, we shared that with our students and said. You know, have you thought about the types of careers that you want to go in? If we had speakers to come out to have some enrichment, who would they want to be? We've got a really good response rate. And the nice thing is, is that, you know, we have advisement periods, we have these tutorial periods where actually students do have the space where they can. Think about some of those things and give us an honest answer. But I, to be honest with you, I really think it's going to be around the frequency of it. And so we just want to. Get just enough information to help us move a little bit more.
Right.
But if we can ever get away from the survey and have actual circle conversations with kids. I always feel like that's a way better approach than just sending out an email, Google form or something to that effect.
And I think the students will really see that you're listening to what careers. And so that makes them want to actually do the surveys. I know sometimes students feel like their information isn't really used, but.
Until they bring, until we bring it in, right? And they actually see it happen. So I think that helps reinforce that.
I think that's awesome. For your. Looking at focusing on students who want peer attention. So how do you focus on, you want to turn that to something positive, you said?
Right.
Can you tell me a little more about how you're doing that?
I'm going to get nerdy here for a second. So there's like four major functions of behavior, right? So you want something tangible, something sensory, you want to avoid something or you're attention seeking, but oftentimes. We treat all the same function of that behavior with the same solution, which is you're going to go on this check in checkout. And the research says that if a student is there and he's being very disruptive or being disrespectful or whatever. And oftentimes it's because he's getting the attention from his peers. If we can offer a mentor that 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 student cares about and help him to be very self reflective about. How disruptive the behavior is and kind of recognize and praise him for when he shows reflection and restraint and does the right thing. Then you can kind of change and replace that negative attention that he's getting in the class with kind of like a. Big brother type aspect or big sister type aspect of mentorship along the way. And then of course, celebrating them, you know, and and beyond that, but you know, now that we have, we make morning announcements about our students of the day and. Some of the perseverance that they've shown. So I think that's a very powerful way to, and also a very strategic way to to help students who. Might need that tension, attention, but they can get it in a different way, if that makes sense.
Very good. I like that. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Again, fabulous job. It's a governance level presentation, has a lot of information in it, but it's at, it's our level, right? So we can, when speaking to parents and stuff, we have enough information as well. But it definitely illustrates your daily dedication to the school, to employees, to the students, to the community. And working with the district leadership. And so it illustrates all of that and some of the shifts and I'm so excited to see them and it takes time. As Dr. Mary will tell us, and Dr. Gloria, it takes time for all those things to mesh together, right? And you have to let it build and build part of the culture. And so really appreciate your dedication to it and your sense of humor with it. That was fun to see too. And then the career conversations. When you teach students to, that it's more of an inner, it's not an interview, they're not picking a career, but it's informational time where like you're asking questions.
Right.
Find out what it's about.
Two way conversations.
Yeah. So you're really understanding what what someone does in that, in that life of that career. Versus I want to pick my career and such a different place to come from. And the fact that you're working with students, that's also a cultural shift, right? So that they can be informative in their, their quest, right, to just understand careers. Not to pick out what they're going to do in sixth grade or seventh grade.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So really appreciate the shift in that, appreciate the shift in the, in the positive behavior and right, that's. And I find it fascinating when you ask someone, like, what would work for you to be able to change your behavior? They often can tell you, right? Not, and people don't normally ask them that and they could tell you what will help them do the shift because they usually don't want to be doing the behavior. It gets them through, right? So.
Absolutely.
We applaud it just.
So then you have those conversations, you talk about impact, like what kind of impact do you think you're having by this behavior? Not why did you do it? But what's the impact? You start naming the people they care about and you go, okay. And and so it offers a little bit more of intrinsic motivation when they understand that, you know, maybe not why, but. They understand when they do engage in it, it does have a broader impact. And I definitely don't want to be doing that, especially for people that I care about. So I think it makes a big change.
Yeah, it creates a greater we, right? The, the, that it's more than just us as an individual, it's the whole community that's learning together. And so. I think that's essential to our democracy.
Agreed.
Really appreciate that. And please extend the board's gratitude to, to all of employees and.
I will.
At Thurston.
Thank you. Yes, it definitely is a, takes a village.
Bravo. Thank you. This moves us to seven G, the report on developer fees. Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours. It's gonna be a little more boring than that.
Thank you, President Norman. I always love following up great presentations like that with business reports. Before you now is a annual report for our developer fees. It's fund 25. It's outside of our general fund 01. Mr. Zeta provided a lot of detailed backup in the item, but just to give a summary. We collect developer fees on new residential and commercial construction. It goes to support the potential housing of new students. The amount that we collect is based on what was assessed back in 2001, $2.05 per square foot for residential and 33 cents per square foot for a commercial. Typically, we receive around $100,000, give or take, per year in developer fees to give the board an idea of the amount budget. The last project we spent, you have to spend the funds on facilities, projects has to be to support new student housing classroom space. The last project we spent it on was the Thurston classroom expansion right over here. And now we are planning on using it to support the TK expansion that our district's undergoing. So with that, happy to take any questions regarding the annual developer fee report. Thank you.
Is it just totally new construction or is it remodel?
Good question. It has to be new construction, new livable space, and it has to be over 500 square feet. So anything under that, there's no fee assessed from the school district.
If someone was adding 1,000 square feet to their house, we would get some part of a developer.
As long as it's livable, correct?
Yeah, I hope they're adding something livable.
Well, it could be a patio, it could be a shed, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
What's the lag period between like a completed project at the city and then when we receive revenue?
Another good question. So it's required as part of the permitting process for the project. So before their permit gets approved, they have to come pay their developer fees prior to them being allowed to build. So it's prior. Yeah, it's part of the permitting process. Correct.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Dixon. And this is going to move us to eight A, monthly financial update. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards?
None received.
Thank you. And Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. So this is taking us through the end of September. So our first full month of school is what the financials reflect here. You'll notice on the first few pages, the trend amount for expenditures and our revenues are right on track with what you'd expect. There is one area that I would like to call attention to the board, just because I think it shows a sign of the times what we experienced in September. We got our new CalPERS OPEB trust report. You see that on page six of 23. You'll notice in there that the investment or the earnings are actually negative, almost $280,000. That's not an actual loss. We didn't withdraw any of those funds. That's a paper loss only, but it does show you, if you recall, there's a significant. Drop in the stock market at that time. So if we were to withdraw the funds, that would have been a loss, but it's not. But as you can tell, over the life of our trust, it's actually up as we've contributed just over 3 million and the total value right now is about 3.58 million. So. Even though with that loss, it's just reflecting of the time, but we're still in a good spot. And at this point, there's no intention to withdraw any of those funds. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? And Mr. Dixon, thank you and your team for always providing robust, relevant financial information for us and as well as for the community large, really appreciate it.
Thank you for the support. An amazing team. One of them happens to be here right now.
Yeah, they are. They're absolutely amazing. We always tell them kudos for you guys. This brings us to nine A, information instruction, elementary visual performance, performing arts VAPA program update. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards in nine A?
None received.
Thank you. Dr. Mary, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. So tonight, we would like to share an update on our current programming for our integrated elementary visual performing arts program. To help me tonight, I wanted to invite up our new elementary VAPA visual performing arts TOSA. Teacher special assignment, Sarah Woolsey, who's going to present with me tonight as we kind of share. An overview of the program, what's going on, not only during the school day that we integrate within classes, but also what we offer beyond the school day. So.
Great. I, our students love visual performing arts. So we wanted to kick us off with a little video. Showing their experiences and I would say that their smiles definitely speak volumes.
So with all of our presentations, I always try to go back to our district goals, right? And so with this slide, I wanted to highlight the things, some of the key things we find in our elementary visual performing arts program. That aligns with our district goals, the three that we've had in our LCAP. As you see on there, there's a lot of alignment and what's, it's really what the need behind that is that it's a comprehensive and strategic approach. What we hope you'll find tonight is there's a lot of intentionality behind it. Around students being creative, students communicating, students expressing themselves. But also that they have strong social emotional wellness. Also that it's inclusive and kids can access it and find their own expression and their own artistic. Artistic needs or artistic wants relating to the things that we have at the elementary level. So I always bring us back to this and I do also want. Go without hesitation to say, I want to thank the board for providing some of the leadership and support in this and having a position, this new position here. But Sarah, who's been wonderful this year already, doing amazing work, getting integrated into the classes. We'll, we'll talk a little bit more about it. But I did want to thank the board. It's been awesome to work with Sarah already this year.
And so when we're talking about visual and performing arts and and teaching those things, it's not just teaching techniques. It's not shading. It's not voice projection. It's all of these skills that you see here. Creativity, collaboration, career exploration, performing, connecting with our community. And that's what we're doing when we teach our VAPA skills. The core of what we do in the classroom is we try to teach real world, real world skills. And our goal is to create a 21. And our goal is to create a 21st century citizen that is ready to go out and get them. And when we are working with VAPA skills, it really does all of these things.
As, as part of the process, when Sarah and I work together, we're working with principals, we're working with instructional coaches or teachers, whether it's elementary level all the way up, all the way up through high school. We do always do have a lens to think through and a framework to think of what can we do for continuous improvement. One of the really exciting things about visual performing arts is the California Board Department of Ed released just before the pandemic and at the beginning of the pandemic, a new standards and frameworks. So it gives us a lens and a framework to look through and say, do we need to do more of this? Maybe we can expand this here, maybe here's some different ideas. We've also worked, obviously worked with a lot of different organizations, especially the Orange County Department of Ed and partnering with other districts so that we can see different ideas out there and see different ways we can engage our kids. So here's just some of the things that CDE is, the California Department of Ed's Vision for Artistic Literacy. And really you can see how they alignment with that, with what we've shared so far in our approach, really around kids developing empathy, having diversity in the arts, developing their own cultural assets, right? And bringing that into their work, developing a positive self, positive identity and ownership of their learning. And then having their own voice and interests and be able to really dig into that. And so these are things we find incredibly important for our students, not just in the art that they're doing and its impact in all different areas across their experience, their time with us at the elementary level. And then before we jump into more specifics around our actual program, I did want to share this. So I think this encompasses a lot of our approach around our elementary, our integrated elementary visual performing arts. Some of you may know, Sir Ken Robinson is a well-known educator, really around creative and cultural education in the UK as well as is in the United States. And he has one of his Ted Talk and he has several books, he's author. But one of the things he really emphasizes is how we often take for granted in schools that students can read and write. And when they can't, how do we teach them how to do that? We assume that we act that way. We don't really think about it. When they're struggling, we provide intervention. And what's really important is the same is true of creativity. Creativity is not someone that's something that people are just born with. It's something that can be taught and something that can be developed. And so that is the approach that we take to provide a very strategic and intentional approach around the programs, the events, the opportunities that we offer students inside and outside the class.
Okay, there are actually five disciplines within visual and performing arts. There is music, theater and performance, dance, media arts and visual arts. And we're going to kick it off with music. So we're lucky at the elementary school to have three amazing educators. We have Beth Sand who teaches chorus, Rich Hartford who teaches band, and then Mr. Wong who teaches strings. All of the students are exposed to this curriculum and our kindergarten, kindergarten through second grade students focus on chorus. Third grade is the transitional year where students are exposed to band, strings and chorus. And that sets them up for fourth and fifth grade where they choose a discipline and focus on just that one area. On top of that, students are able to extend their music learning through these opportunities that are listed up on the screen, just a few of them. And our goal really is to showcase everything that they've learned, but also give them opportunities to develop their skills even more.
And I just, and I just wanted to add to this last slide. I think one of the more important things that we like to do the after-school program is offer some of these for kids that aren't, we're able to fit into the day, that we always have these classes that are offered after school to allow them to do that, as well as whether it's a competition or a field trip or a show. But really a chance to extend that as they head to middle school where they may be taking a little bit more serious approach to it or more in-depth approach to that development. The next one that we want to look at is around media arts, the discipline of artistic literacy within that. A lot of this work is read, is supported by our tech tosas, Mr. Bay and Ms. Alt. They use a whole host of different themes, whether, whether it's through photography, video, any kind of like 3D printing, there's different digital portfolios that they're working on. Google drawings, a lot of technology involved in that where kids are able to design and be creative. Whether that's all the way like our computer science coding program, which goes all the way down to kindergarten where kids are coding little B-bots and little robots all the way up through fifth grade. And it really allows for that creativity to come out and then to potentially design or figure out a solution to a problem and bring out all those different skills that are very important, but also the experiences that are engaging for students. This is an example of one of the things that their, their, our tech tos to support in this area around media arts. They have a roadmap that they create where it slowly progresses, as I mentioned, from kindergarten all the way up through fifth grade. This, this pathway is primarily showing the coding pathway. It gets a little bit more complex as kids develop the skills, but it also allows a lot more creativity and a lot more opportunity for kids to express and come up with new ideas and new solutions. Some of the different activities we have behind that, again, lots of after-school programs for this. There's also some art contests, there's Google Doodle Contest, PTA Reflections. That always, the annual always has different modes of art that we can, that students can get awards for. One of them is related to this media arts.
And then as far as theater and performance, each grade level participates in this, whether it be a reader theater just in the classroom or a full-blown musical where the NPR is filled with screaming parents. And what's exciting about these as well is that all of these activities that they do within the classroom are tied into the curriculum that the students are learning as well, which is huge. On top of that, students are given opportunity to expand their enjoyment of theater and performance with our after-school programs, acting workshops. What I really have loved is the partnership between the elementary school, the middle school and the high school as well, where performances will come and give our students a sneak peek of the different activities that are happening at the different schools. And also the acting workshops that our high school students sometimes do for our elementary schools and elementary school students when they're preparing for their own presentations.
And, and I also, another piece that really connects, I think, as you'll see in here, you kind of see a little bit in the titles of some of these. And again, this is a snapshot. This is not everything that teachers are doing. These are the ones that parents or students may know well, because there's a little more formality to them. But you'll see different subject areas, as Sarah had said, like the Charlotte's Web, right? There's a connection there and the reading and the reading part of the class. There's a part about biography, living biography. There's a part here on geology rocks, right? Gold dust or bust. It's really connecting across the curriculum, which is really the most impactful way to integrate this type of learning, this type of expression. Next one I want to talk about a little bit is dance. Dance, there are some dances that the kids do. Obviously there's some, there's some overlap there with the performance piece. Most of those performances for kids involve dance. It takes a little bit of like, like square dancing in grades four, fourth and fifth grade that they'll do depending on the school. They do it in different grades. The dance partnership we have with the high school, the high school, our high school dance teachers coming, we'll be working with our PE teachers more in the spring this year. But a lot of this piece comes from our PE teachers. They have some, they really are looking through fundamental local motor skills that the students are doing. Something that when you think of like dance, we're often thinking about like people that are very professional and spend a lot of time in it. But a lot of it's just about movement, right? Little things like moving your weight, right? Finding different balances that progresses into something that might be, that might be doing a repeated, when they're younger, they're looking for a repeated pattern. But they're going to do some kind of movement that repeats and it's three steps versus four steps. And it keeps progressing all the way to students may come up with their own dance, to their own song. And so our PE teachers often use a very common PE curriculum called Spark that utilizes this. I don't know how well you can see it up here. There's a few dances in here that they recognize, the grapevine, the three-step turn. A few more that they probably are not in there that they have integrated from more current music. But they really try to find different ways within PE to find ways to fit the dance and to fit those kind of really around the movements of kids and the coordination. And so a few extension activities, we've had a cheerleading clinic, the talent shows, lots and lots of dances. If you've been to our talent show, oh my gosh, seems probably the most popular one there. And then the part, then also the, the high school, middle school come down and do different things with the kids as well to get them excited about that.
So within visual arts, I would say that teachers truly have a knack for infusing everything they're doing into art lessons. And this overwhelming bullet list behind me is, is literally just a snapshot of everything that you might see in the classroom. Every day when you walk into a classroom, you're going to see something happening with the visual arts. Um, the other thing that we have at both elementary schools is a partnership with both the Laguna Art Museum. Students in K through second and also fifth grade visit, I'm sorry, they do lamb labs with them six times a year. And for our third and fourth grade students, they partner with the Art Masters Program. And what's exciting to see is that these relationships are developing too. The programs are changing. So this year, one twist of the Laguna Art Museum experience is that each grade level that participates will do one of their lessons at the actual museum and they'll get a tour of the museum as well. And then also for Art Masters, we are going to be hosting family art nights at both of the elementary schools as well. Okay, so this, this is me, the integrated visual arts. My job is to, I meet with every class every few weeks. And my job is to infuse what the students are already seeing curriculum-wise into art lessons. And I love this because it gives me the opportunity to work with every student in the district at the elementary level. But even more so, it gives students an opportunity to revisit their curriculum, to see it through a different lens that can really enhance visual processing and creativity as well. On top of that, we have a slew of opportunities for students to pursue visual arts outside of their traditional classroom day, whether it be through Boo Blast t-shirt contest or a Jog-a-thon, window drawing art, the Google Doodle one that was mentioned previously. And also we have a ton of field trips that we encourage students to participate in as well. And the, our town is built on art. And I think it's really important to make sure that our students are aware of that and that it's a part of their everyday experience as well at LBUSD. So we try and push that through our VAPA program as well, whether it be students participating in the La Pampa Laguna Plain Air Painters Association paintout, their work that they do with the fourth grade team. Students participating and contributing to a mural that will be featured at the Sawdust Winter Fantasy Festival. Or students learning about endangered animals through workshops like Drawing Through the Planet with the renowned artist Jane McCracken. And that happened just last week. To me, this is the most important. At LBUSD, relationships matter and we back that up with our actions as well. One of the things that we've added this year, along with my position, is we've opened up art labs at both elementary sites. And that is a space on both campuses where students are invited in to just create and use all of my art supplies, all of our art supplies during recess and during lunch. And it gives students an opportunity to be seen, be heard, to feel like they have a place. And that's what LBUSD is all about. And the other bonus of having the art lab is that students always leave me little gems like this on my desk. And our presentation, we can talk forever, but at the end of the day, it's what the, what the students really care about. And for a student like Elle, she said it perfectly, we grow with art. And, and Laguna Beach, art is just not a cost, it's an investment. So thank you guys for the opportunity of all the visual arts we get to do. Thank you to School Power. Thank you to PTA as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes. I've heard wonderful things about the art lab and I thank you so much for that. I think maybe you're the brainchild on that, Sarah, and from parents and students about having a place to go some when they felt awkward and didn't want to be on the playground. I think that's, that's huge. Now, I'm not sure if I really understood. So you do lessons with all the students?
I do, yeah. So I meet with all 50, all 50 classes from TK through fifth grade. And so I rotate through them. I do one site at a time, one week on, one week off. So it's a lot of back and forth movement, but by the end of four weeks, I hit every single feature. I get to work with all the students in the district.
Okay, so it's basically once a month, each student at LRO and TOW gets to do something with you that has to do with their curriculum. But is art-based. I love that. Now, what is your budget, Sarah? Do you have a budget if you wanted to bring something else in or materials or how, how does that work?
We have a very specific, we have a budget that we use for visual performing arts. And obviously it depends on the, you know, the secondary level, it comes, you might get that through different buckets, but we use a big chunk of general funds that we make, we budget out where we thought the expenses would be at the beginning of the year. We talked through different activities. And then depending on how it goes, we decide, we were planning to meet here about, actually pretty soon as we finish up the first semester to see where that's at and if we need to make any adjustments to it. But there's a, there's a budget that we have to bring people in for more supplies as needed. What's really fun about having Sarah and her creativity is she often can look and say, gosh, we have so many of this, of these, this paint. Maybe I'll just do a project that uses up these ones that we're overstocked on. And so it's really kind of fun to see the creativity there when we're working within a budget, but then also they're having the flexibility to adjust it.
Okay, I'll, I have some more, but I'll let my fellow board members.
Are there additional comments?
I wanted to make a comment on, echo on the art lab. That's great. Where, where are you hosting those in terms of like which classroom or room at each elementary?
So at each, at each school site, I have a portable that's just dedicated to me hosting the different classes to teach art.
Okay.
So I use, I open that up during recess for lunch.
Okay. And I just, I wanted to call attention, you kind of went through it quickly. And then I was back reading your three examples of these lessons on force and friction, on the explorer stuff and on the specialized beak or animal part adaptations. And this kind of work is really exciting to me. And I think it takes a really specialized person that can get in and see what a teacher or a grade level is doing in their classroom and come up with a project that fits right in and that you've got the supplies for and that you're delivering. And that is fun and isn't just doing painting because we want the kids to paint or doing pastels because we want to teach them about pastels, but is actually about beak adaptations because they're probably studying beak adaptations in their science book or what have you. So kudos for this and to be bouncing around at school sites, writing it as you go is really impressive. So thank you. I'd like to see more of that.
Great. Well, Kelly honestly was inspired by your garden lessons. You do the same thing. So thank you.
Jan?
Oh, I can make my comment too and then go back to you. Okay. Hearing students sing songs they learned in primary when they're in secondary taking a test or to prep for the test shows how the integration is so important, right? Whether it's geology or whatever they're singing about, like it's awesome to hear them all suddenly start singing those songs. And it shows that integration. And then the additional, I was going to point out what member Osborne did, like just that additional integration. That's, it's impressive. To hear you say though, to be seen and to be heard is what LBSD is all about, is moving. I mean, it's just, it's moving that you create that space for them. And then humans can remember a 250-word song, but they cannot remember 250 words on a page of text that they read. And so that is one of those vital parts of why music is so important and fluctuating in voice and having rhythm. And it's just how we actually remember things. And so the fact you guys are tapping into it, the board is 100% behind art programs. We have been, will be, the community is art-based. And so thank you for highlighting all this and, and showing the integration and the importance of it.
Well, I just wanted to draw attention to your comment that you observed that we, you see this in the classes every day. And it's not just a specific lesson that comes along, that's an addition, but that it's going on. Not all of these things, not all the disciplines every day, but it is there incorporated into teachers, how they teach on a regular basis. And when you were talking about the quote from about being creative and you can teach creativity, I think the biggest thing that we have a responsibility I think the biggest thing that we have a responsibility for that I, it looks like we're, we're doing a lot. I, I knew we were doing a lot. It's nice to have it all summarized like this with the impact. Is that little humans are really creative. And then we are forced to channel them into all this academics and structured learning and we can take that away. So to have the daily emphasis that that's a part of it. And I appreciate that you noted that so that we can be, that we're assured of that. Thank you.
And we know that the, the joy and creativity that comes with us actually helps our test scores. And so teachers shouldn't feel badly about making time for this. I wondered if you are going to analyze the areas and see where we might need something else, for example, like the integrated theater and performance. Now, we can't expect Sarah to do everything, but that's what I, what I meant about maybe if we needed more funds for something like that for every student, you know, a couple of times a year or something.
Yeah, I think that, that has been part of our conversations. We, her and me pretty almost, almost weekly. And then we're, we're talking through what, what are we seeing so far? Now that we have someone here that's really focused on this full time, we're able to see some things like that. I think as we know at the elementary level, uh, one of the challenges is they, those teachers teach everything, right? And so, what Sarah's been able to do is really for the most part, she's focusing on science and some social studies, uh, lessons that are, that are replacing or enhancing what they're already doing. So it's not adding to them because that's really the challenge. We can't add anymore to our elementary teachers. But as they do a performance or thinking through some other areas of whether, you know, could she, you know, could someone else help her, things like that? Those are the things that we're kind of assessing this year as we go along and taking notes on. So that when we get further along the year, we can say, here's some areas that we could use some more support on, or here's some areas that we feel like we're doing really well on, uh, what that would look like.
Like, I mean, still within the curriculum, but somebody who's really good in drama that could have them learn a little skit that explains division or whatever. I was lucky enough to actually meet and see Dr. Ken Robinson a couple of times and very inspiring for creativity. And I'm so glad our students are getting this. Thank you.
And I was gonna add in addition, performance, the performing part of the arts, it does provide for that space tying into what Principal Vidal was talking about in working in a positive way with students and creating the circles of conversation. Because in performing, when you're putting on someone else's shoes, right? The empathy that has to go into that and then the audience, what they get from watching. I mean, they're just as much part of the performance. And what they're gaining from it and watching their fellow student take on, you know, a different role in their personality. And they all learn from that. And so applaud all of the work you're doing. And I still have so many of the outcomes of those visual projects throughout my house and our relatives' homes. And I still love them every day. My kids sometimes are embarrassed by them now and I just love them all. So thank you for all the work you do. Thanks for bringing your just a different, fresh, creative look to all of it. I know the teachers must just, you inspire them for all, all of what you showed. You're really inspiring. Thanks very much.
And thank you again for your support and leadership in this area. It's really, I feel very fortunate to have all the support, uh, and able to provide this for the students.
Thank you both. This takes us to ten A. Approval of the new job description and position work-based learning technician, Clark Osborne. Have you received any public comment cards on ten A?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Normden. So as you can see, with the district acceptance of the OC Pathways Regional Case Sixteen Collaborative Grant. One of the requirements of accepting that grant is to create this work-based learning technician position. The position is responsible for performing a variety of duties to assist in planning, organizing and supporting student enrollment and work-based learning activities for career and adult education programs, develop and maintain working relationships with students, parents, school personnel and community partners. Serve as a resource to the district office, school sites, students, parents and department personnel. So we have taken this through the process where we went through the six-time process with CSEA that was approved. And just on the ninth of November, the, the members of CSEA ratified the position. So we now bring it to the board for a request for approval. So we can move forward with, um, posting the position and, and filling the position. Like, if you have any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Yeah, may I have a question? Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Student provisional vote?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Passes fours zero one. Isn't that zero in there? Jim's not voting, no. I'm sorry. I follow you up there. Next is eleven A, approval of independent contractor agreement with Ellipsis Math to provide facts-wise addition subtracting training for elementary staff and amount not to exceed five thousand two hundred dollars. Clark Osborne, have you received any comment cards on eleven A?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I'm still pretty excited about that. Elementary VAPA was fun. Talk about all that good stuff. This next item bringing forward, uh, the contract with Ellipsis Math. Uh, this, this was requested by teachers. Uh, we've done some different work around coming out of the pandemic, thinking through different, our needing more strategies and more practice around problem solving and conceptual understanding. Uh, there's someone that we've worked with before. That was well received by the teachers. And so, uh, we want to bring this forward to work with our teachers for a few days, uh, during the school year, uh, with possibly bringing them back later on for more work. But the, uh, really at the elementary level, uh, the, the teachers are interested and how do we help expand students' problems, problem, strong, problem solving strategies, uh, in the area of math? And this would hopefully help with that.
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you. You have a second? Thank you. Student provisional vote? All in favor? Motion carries four zero one. And this moves us to eleven B, approval of services provided by like I think Magnus, Mag, Mag, Magana, there we go, Magana, just get to where you're going. Education for consultant leadership and instructional coaching related to unit design in amount not to exceed thirty nine thousand dollars. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment cards?
No.
Thank you. Dr. Mayberry, the floor is yours again.
Thank you. Uh, and I did, I just want to say the previous one and this one are both from the educator effectiveness grant, um, which is specifically targeted at staff training. This one bringing forward, uh, the technology instructional services departments, as you know, working together on a lot of our, our training and, and, and support for teachers, uh, and staff. Uh, we want to request a continued partnership with Sunny McGaney for two more years. Sunny is a, has, has a, was a connection that, uh, Mike Morrison had, had brought to the district a few, a year or two ago. Uh, he's done some work with us around edge protocols, the T three framework, which we use in our unit design. As well as some instructional coaching, uh, we've done some training with our admin on that. We want to continue that partnership. It's been really impactful. This would allow us to, uh, this year and the following year to partner, to continue the coaching piece for our tech tosses for admin. Uh, but then also to enhance the, the unit design, especially we're hoping in the summer months. When do we have more time with the teachers and, and we can have a little bit more extended, uh, learning opportunities, extended design time, uh, with them, and we can have them there to help with that. And so we're bringing this forward to continue that partnership, uh, for two more years.
Any questions or comments?
Dr. Mayberry, is this a one-year cost? I know it's a two-year contract, but is it an annual? Um, or is it the total for the two years?
It's a total for the, it'll be the total for the two years.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other? Okay, thank you. Awesome. Moving second by the way. Student provisional vote? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries four zero one. And this moves us on to twelve A. Approval of October twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two board meeting minutes. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment cards?
No.
Okay. Oh, Dr. Gloria, the floor is yours.
It's just, um, as the secretary, just pointing out, remember, uh, Clark Osborne was absent for that meeting. So she has to abstain. So I hope the three of you approve of the minutes because otherwise we won't, we can't approve them. So we'll bring them back again next meeting.
I move approval.
All second. Okay. Um, all of it, oh, sorry, student provisional vote? Okay. All in favor? Right, okay. Opposed? Stained? Clark Osborne, stained? Okay. So motion carries three zero two. Oh, oh, cause three zero one one. One absent, one staying. No, I'll never get those. Acronyms. Should never put it. Yeah, yeah. You know, and can we take a quick board break, five minutes? It is seven forty-four. Right. We're back. Thank you. At seven fifty-three, we're reconvening. We're at thirteen A consent calendar. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on thirteen A consent calendar? See through V?
No.
Thank you. Um, do any members wish to make a comment or ask a question on consent item? Not pull it for a board discussion and vote.
Jeff, is there any likelihood we're going to get better rates? Better rates, investment rates?
Uh, one would hope, but, uh, will not make that promise. Yes, yes.
You want to trip? It, can I make a comment now or should I wait till my comments? Well, I noticed.
That's what I'd ask is what's the comment? What's the number?
Had noted that, um, the passing of Rome Friesen. And he's credited with starting Model UN at our high school in the late sixties. He taught here for many years. In fact, he would, I remember once I saw him, he was subbing for Jen Lundblad. So after he retired before he moved away, he'd sub. So just wanted to give a, a note to that. Cause it's became such a vibrant program for many years. He's a very dedicated teacher.
Well, thank you for sharing that. Any other comments? Okay.
Oh, they like it.
January. And I grew up in California, so.
I think that's part of what they like so much is the different weather, the whole, the whole experience. Sorry, we're kind of in discussion. Yeah. Okay. Do any members want to pull any items and have a separate conversation and vote on? Okay. Then, um, yes, please. Through V. Okay. Student provisional vote? Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion carries four zero one. And this brings us to fourteen A governance action. Fourteen A is the second reading approval of board policies in the three thousand series. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on fourteen A?
No.
Thank you. May I have a motion a second before you go, Jen? I have to read up policies. For BP thirty-one hundred budget, BP thirty-one ten transfers of time, BP thirty-five twenty-three electronic signatures. BP thirty-five fifty food service child nutrition program, thirty-five fifty-one food service operation cafeteria fund. And BP thirty-five fifty-three free and reduced price meals. I have a motion. Thank you. Awesome. Okay. Perfect. Any, any discussion before we vote? Okay, student provisional vote? Okay. All in favor? Okay, motion carries four zero one. And this takes us to fourteen B, the second reading or approval of board policies in the seven thousand series. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on fourteen B?
No.
Okay. And then I'll look for a motion a second after I read the policies below. Seven thousand facilities, seventy-one ten facilities master plan, seventy-one fifty site selection and development, seventy-two eleven developer fees. May I have a question? Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion on any of them? You guys are looking, so I don't want to. Mm-hmm, yeah. I'm just looking to make sure, because everybody's like reading a little more diligently than before. So, okay. Student provisional vote? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Motion passes four zero one. Well, everybody was reading, all three of you at the same time. So I was like, wait a minute. Okay, this moves us to fourteen C, the second reading approval of board bylaws in the nine thousand series. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment on fourteen C? Thank you. May I have a motion a second to approve the following policies, BB ninety, ninety twelve, board member electronic communications, BB ninety-one hundred annual organizational meeting. BB ninety-one fifty student board members, BB ninety-two hundred limited, limits of the board member's authority. BB ninety-three twenty meetings and notices and BB ninety-three twenty-two agenda meeting materials. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions, comments or discussion?
I just want to make a comment on ninety-two hundred. I wanted to, um, thank the board and the collaboration. We had to revise the wording around, um, the limits of board member authority regarding when we have children in the district. Um, because we obviously face that, um, challenge and I'm, I'm really pleased with the new wording. So thank you, everybody.
That's more clarity on there. Student or student provisional vote? Okay, all in favor? Motion carries four zero one. This moves us to fourteen D, the first reading of board policies in the four thousand series. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on fourteen D? Thank you. May I have a motion second to move the following policies forward for second reading approval at our next regular, uh, meeting. They are BP four thousand thirty non-discrimination in employment, BP forty-one eighteen dismissal suspension disciplinary action. BP four one, one nine point one, four two one nine point one, four three one nine point one civil and legal rights. BP four one four zero, four two four zero, four three zero four, four three four zero bargaining units. BP forty-two eighteen dismissal suspension disciplinary action and BP forty thirty non-discrimination employment. Second. Any discussion or comments? Student provisional vote? Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Dean.
Um, just a quick question about the bargaining units. Um, I'm, I'm seeing in Los Angeles and up in the Bay Area, um, more parents wanting to be involved in the bargaining because they feel students aren't being represented. What do you think, Dr. Valoria?
This is separate because it's obviously a board policy related to the formation of bargaining units and their, uh, parents would not be considered a local bargaining unit, right? They're not an employee of the district. So the opportunity for, um, uh, by, uh, public employment relation board and the rules opportunity for, uh, parents or a community, and just in general, um, to comment on, uh, negotiations is at the time when the item is sunshined. Which we note, right? So the sun shining, so when that is when negotiations opens. So, uh,
Probably participating in the bargaining.
And bargaining is between the, the parents would not participate. That's between the negotiated.
Some places are changing that.
And we can explain, this is not specific to that. This item is specific to the bargaining units being able to organize. So.
Okay, got your vote. Okay, all in favor? Okay. Motion passes four zero one. And this brings us to fourteen E, the first reading of board policies in the five thousand series. Clark, Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on fourteen E?
No.
Thank you. Um, may I have a motion a second to move the following policies forward for second reading and approval at the next regular meeting. BP five one three two apparent standards, BP five one four five point one one questioning and apprehensive by law, by law enforcement. And BP five one four five point one to search and see shirts. Thank you. I'll second. Okay, any, uh, questions, discussions, comments?
And I think a lot of the changes that we've made as a board, um, are positive. You know, we've And I think a lot of the changes that we've made as a board um, are positive. You know, we've added some important language about the principal reviewing the policy with sites. Sites having um, the policy in their handbooks, which might be different for an elementary or a middle or a high school, should they um, need to be. And that the principal is um, and that students also are being informed. Um, I don't know if it's annually in here. I have to look that up, but they're definitely being informed of what the dress code is, so that they have a chance at the beginning of the year to know what the expectations are. Um. The one piece that I'm unclear on is right now, I believe it says the principal or designees authorized to enforce the policy. So is that like one or two people out of site, or is that any teacher could be a designee? Cause it seems like then we get a lot of interpretations of a site's dress code. So I just want to understand that language a little bit better.
Uh, it would be the principal or someone else that, that is a part of the school that could, that could be the assistant principals, it could be teachers. It just depends on the, the context of the situation, so. Most typically, the schools kind of talk through that planning piece, plan out like this is something that I will, that someone's going to focus on, or someone's going to make sure is enforced. So it probably depends on school to school, but yeah, it's usually not just the principal. Uh, it's usually multiple people.
Okay. Because um, right now, the way it's written, the principal or designate, um, a designate is singular, so if we're, you know, gonna have the principal or multiple designees throughout a school site, we might want to change the wording.
I think that would indicate whoever might be designated by the principal. So they might have five people they would choose from, is whoever they would designate for that period of time. I don't think it means that it's just a designate.
A designate, okay.
It's just that it's the.
The way you read it.
It's the concept of, it doesn't have to be the principal, it can be a designate.
Okay.
And I just wonder, Kelly, if that next sentence down.
Yeah.
Clarifies for you um, a- after that paragraph. That the, all those people on the staff are in, are notified annually of what's appropriate and equitable enforcement, so that that I would think would attempt to clarify any kind of what you seem to feel is maybe randomness in, in who applies the standards.
Well, I know, we talked about that and we wanted to make sure, I think the board discussed that, so that we could have more consistent enforcement. That's why we have this annual notification of all of those.
Right.
Um, people. I'm just trying to understand and make sure we as a board have a clear discussion on this, because it just, to, you know, to be honest, this comes up all the time. As board members, we hear about this and it's our policy and then we're giving latitude to the, the sites, and I think rightfully earned, to put their own interpretation of it into their handbook that meets these, you know, uh, higher level board standards. And so I just really want us to have a clear understanding of how that stands. Is it just one or two people, like a principal or an AP? Or is it all of these people and they're all going to consistently enforce it? And I know we discussed this before.
Right. Say for Dr. Valoria though, when how do you see the principals interpreting designate? Cause I, I think it's a broader, but the question really, I think, clerk, like whether we need to limit it some. Is that what you're really asking? Whether there needs to be some limitations, so it's not random?
It just needs to be consistent. The kids need to know what's acceptable and it needs to be consistent. You wouldn't, I mean, the worst case scenario is that a student gets, you know, uh, some violation. And they feel like it was unfair. Maybe it's being applied by somebody that isn't. Um, now this policy is under development, so you know, in fairness to any site is not out and, you know, broadly communicated, but I just really want it to be enforced consistently. And sometimes the less number of people that are enforcing it, the easier it is to have it be consistent. But Jan, Member Vickers has a great point. We have all of these people that were notifying of what the appropriate and equitable enforcement is, so that it's not just up to people to interpret it without having been notified. So I'm just trying to have a little bit of a conversation, so I understand it better.
I guess I didn't have the same confusion, but just with that, with how many people are notified annually. Because like you at the high school, I mean, the principal isn't going to see most of those students. So it would have to be the support of everyone who's on the site if there was something that was not appropriate. And then they might, I don't know whose attention they draw to. That would be a site level decision as far as the chain of command.
Right, right. So if you, if there was a question related to, you know, does, is this violating or not violating, right? That would be at the principal's or, or assistant principal, the administrator's level, right, to make that determination ultimately. So I think to the question of enforcement of the policy, you know, you, in, in situations where, you know, there's a questionable um, uh, dress code, potential violation, you know, leaving in the hands of the administrator and or designate to say, you know, this is what the punishment was going, is going to be, right? Uh, they're the ones that should be doling out any sort of punishment. That's, you know, truth be told, the, the teacher, if they wish to, you know, have the student go change, that would be something, again, they typically would make a referral um, up to the office to have that taken care of. So um, I think, you know, for us, it's a matter of, again, consistency in application and communicating what that means to our staff. So, you know, as this, this site, for example, is in the process of evaluating their dress code, as the high school did more recently, and in doing so, we'll communicate out what those expectations are. And in the meantime, I know that Joe, um, you know, Principal Vidal and his staff are communicating that out when those situations arise, so that if there is a situation where a staff member has a concern that his request at this time, while we're in the process of going through this, is to let him know and let Ms. Ham, Hammer know, and they will address that. Um, and not to have staff members necessarily request that students change, or whatever it might be. So, you know, I think it's just during this transition time, I think that's what, you know, he's trying to uh, articulate to his staff. Just because, you know, the high school has theirs and I, I think um, there are some questionable questions here as to whether they feel if it's equitable and it meets the, the criteria that the board is setting forth here, right? So um, I, I would expect it will, cause the criteria has changed, correct?
Point of consistency of application. That, that really is it. So if anyone can refer, cause everyone gets the information, so they can refer a student. The person actually applying it and saying yes, and then this is what happens because of it. Right? Could be an explanation, reminder, depends on where they are, right? That, that's one or two people in the office. It's not just anyone who. Okay.
Traditionally, there are going to be outliers.
I always understand there, and yes, but is there anything within our policy that needs to stay around consistency of application or anything in there that?
Says it.
I thought I read it, but it's not.
No, it says it, it says it that right here, equitable enforcement, right? So.
Well, equitable, the consistency word is what got me, cause it is the consistency. Maybe consistent, maybe, sorry.
I put my microphone on this whole time. I'm sorry, fellow board.
Say this, yes, maybe we do need to add appropriate, consistent, and equitable enforcement, cause that's, that was actually the where I was going, and Member Vickers pointed out that paragraph that talks about notifying them, which to Dr. Valoria's point is making people aware of it. But if the, the typical chain of command is to just elevate it to an AP or a principal to deal with, then that, um, I really like that, and they can make a consistent.
Because that keeps it consistent, but it's, it's a limited amount of people who are actually doing that.
So would anybody be opposed if we said, um, in that paragraph that Member Vickers pointed out, school administrators, teachers, coaches, and other staff shall be notified of appropriate, consistent, and equitable enforcement of the dress code?
Victoria's making the change right now. Are we all good with that? Is that inconsistent? Okay. I just, I just like, cause you talk, I guess, you've talked about it over the years, always that way, and I thought, oh, I was just looking for the word. Yeah. Yeah, no, it's not. We just don't.
Deal with it, and.
Yeah. Well, and I want to applaud, applaud Dr. Mayberry, because he really sat with us for a long time. This, he sat with his policy before Member Osborne even joined, with how to, how to write it, so that we're not shaming students, but we're allowing them to authentically be them and be appropriate for the conditions that they're within, right? And that it's hard for HR and businesses across the board, you know, even harder, cause we're teaching students, right? And so I just, I applaud that first paragraph. I mean. Well, yeah, that's, that is, it's funny what you could just yell by, uh, I'm gonna tell your mom and also they'll just put their clothes right back the way they were, right? Just so that, that's the joy of a small community and the power of a small community.
I think this is a, a really um, overdue, but great upgrade to this policy. It's a much more modern policy for our school district, so thank you guys all for your work um, on it, and I'm, I'm look forward to it moving through our policy process and getting into the hands approved of our site, so they can update their handbooks and notify these people on this paragraph. Thank you.
And you have to know, they're already reading it and looking at it and are well aware of it. They're all, they're all, they all know it's coming. And then I, and I really appreciate the ones on law enforcement and search and seizure and just identifying and putting the information there and trying those those differences when those unique things happen. Appreciate. Okay. Student provisional vote? Awesome. Okay, all, did you have a question, Dee? I'm sorry, I just, okay. Sorry, I just didn't want to skip you. Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passes four zero one. And this brings us to fourteen F, the first reading of board policies in the six thousand series. Clerk Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on fourteen F? Okay, thank you. May I have a motion as second to move the following policies forward for a second reading approval at the next regular scheduled meeting? BP six one four six point one high school graduation requirements, BP six one five eight independent study, and BP sixty-two hundred adult education. Okay. Any discussion, comments?
I, I have a little bit. In looking. Um, I'm looking at six one four six point one, the high school graduation requirements. What, what did we ever do with um, AB thirteen thirty? Which has, which has to do with career technical education being one of the options. That was passed uh, in two, twenty twelve, I think. Uh, options, it was one of the options for six visual or performing arts. I don't know what happened to that. I was thinking about, we're trying to give students more choice for their own education and power about what they think is best for them. And I, I was wondering if we could at least discuss maybe not having the one semester course in global studies. And so they would have another option for an elective. So maybe they could take an CTE class or another art class. I know that the state does not require global studies.
Yes, but it's going to require ethnic studies.
It will, but it doesn't right now.
It does require ethnic studies at, at that certain point, so that what we would be doing is for a very short period of time.
Right, but even for that short, isn't it not till twenty twenty-five or something?
That our district could get, you know, have that class like that in place sooner than the required deadline.
And, and that's totally within the purview of the, of the board. My point, Member Perry, would be if we take it away, then we would just be adding it back very shortly.
Right.
Right.
So there's some students that would be able to take advantage of that. Uh, is there something else that is there something else here that we could take away, so students could have another elective?
So one thing I think in our, our student board rep mentioned and during his report, is looking at the actual bell schedule to provide more opportunities for electives, and I think in lieu of shifting graduation around, I think, um, Nick, what was the number of classes that students would be able to take?
Thirty-two, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah. If they were to take, and so again, trying to make sure we limit that or challenge, you know, we won't, we don't want students being overwhelmed, but students will have um, uh, increased opportunity to take additional electives.
Okay.
With a schedule that would, that would provide that. I would, I would caution the board against moving towards, um, and this is why we didn't bring it towards, for recommendation to have the VAPA taken place of the CTE is the, you know, UC system does not um, uh, grant that same. It may the, you know, they say, yes, you want to do that, well then you're no longer UCCSU eligible, cause you haven't met that criteria. So we didn't make that recommendation to the board. One, it wasn't permanent either. Um, and it, it almost didn't make it this last time, and I think I, I mentioned that too previously, when we had this conversation before, that it almost didn't actually get approved, and there was a large group of students that would have potentially not graduated from um, school because of the, the state legislature on that one. So we didn't make that recommendation to add um, a CTE class in lieu of that. Um, again, it's within the board's purview.
Why? Because you wanted students to be UC eligible and.
Cause they still could take, correct. They still could take CTE classes, right? Yeah, there's plenty of credits available. You know, you have sixty units of electives that are also still part of that. Um, to make one of those in lieu of uh, visual performing arts was not something that uh, staff would brought forward as a recommendation, it was, so.
I know I, my kids all had a lot of classes, whether they're here, but can you still take eleven classes, like in a, in a?
Our students, they have a lot of options, cause they could take concurrent enrollment.
Yeah.
They could take MUN, they could take CCA classes outside of the day. So um, yes, so not only will, you know, as we're looking at the schedule, uh, moving forward with um, at the high school and looking for, as I think Member Perry points out, more opportunities, increased opportunities for students to take electives, including CTE and VAPA electives. That uh, that won't preclude them from continuing to do things that they are ready to do outside of the regular day. Uh, whether it's a CCA class that's not offered on our campus or concurrent enrollment, not offered on our campus. So we have to be mindful that, you know, in some districts, that students can easily meet the graduation criteria early.
Right.
Right? Um, in, in these types of schedules, and so um, you know, they actually, for example, in our neighboring district Irvine, they have early graduation um, processes for students to graduate uh, the end of their junior year, because they have access to so many credits. Their, their graduation requirement is two hundred fifteen credits. Ours is more. However, um, students would be able to rather quickly kind of progress through, with the exception of, you know, the classes that are grade level specific, right? Like twelfth grade English, however. I've, again, they do allow that in, in their district, so. We haven't gotten to that point, cause we don't have, you know, they're just in conversation around what that might look like, but there has been an interest, I think, a community interest, a staff interest, and a student interest to be able to access more courses. So if the schedule's a limiting factor, then that schedule can adjust accordingly, right? So.
I'm. Consideration of evening classes?
Yeah, I mean, I think the challenge we have and we recognize is, you know, our students are busy in the evenings, either with sports and activities, and those, those adjust, right? So for example, we might have um, the soccer practices starts at three o'clock, and then once they're closer to the season, because the fields are impacted, they don't go till seven thirty. So we have to be mindful of what we try to put out there. But we do have some, uh, you know, um, obviously students can take, the concurrent enrollment is typically, if they're not doing it within our regular, they're doing it outside. Um, that's an evening. MUN still exists and still probably will remain, um, and more likely AER is another class that's offered outside. Um, so we don't want to try to shove everything into the bell schedule necessarily. We do have some things that we've created that are flexible. And it's very unique, I'll be honest. There are not a lot of school districts that do what we do in that, in that process, but we do that because our student body needs that to be able to access some of these things outside of regular, traditional times, right? But you don't find a lot of programs like what we offer to our students in that sense, those evening things like MUN or. Right? Yeah, so the, the, the idea would be that seventh or eighth period would traditionally, like we currently are doing with fifth and sixth right now, being athletics, so that would still, that would remain more like the athletics period, marching band period, but there'd be some class offerings potentially for students um, during that time period as well. So, you know, that just gives you an increased load, cause now if your PE is seventh or eighth period or your athletics, you're now able to access six academics, and including electives versus right now, five versus, and with the athletics. So there's an additional class at least, right? And the potential for more. So again, we have to, we have to be thoughtful, because we don't want, as a student, and we talked about this, and students agreed as well, you don't want a student taking eight AP classes. Right? So, you know, how do we, how do we limit, how do we do that in a limiting factor that's thoughtful and doesn't overwhelm, and so we don't have the student taking eleven of which seven are AP? Like, that's not healthy. Um, so, uh, but to the, to the question at, at hand related to the graduation requirements, you know, we have two hundred and thirty units, which is ten credits shy of, or you know, shy of, bless you, uh, UC requirements, so we're, we're right up against it. Um, we have, you know, fairly rigorous requirements in order for our students to graduate, and these have been in existence, obviously, well before my arrival. And they do somewhat align to uh, the UCs, which has been more or less the alignment we've done with a lot of things, so. Um, but as it stands right now, and I think to, to Member Perry's point, um, you know, moving, the board could definitely make that shift. Um, if that was the board interest to move global studies away, um, but I think you have a, a. Um, if that was the board interest to move global studies away, um, but I think you have a, a difference in that Ms. Vickers wants to move up the requirement for ethnic studies. So that would counterpoint, right? So.
And I think that, that after, the different classes you can take afterwards, it's mainly Monday through Thursdays. Then you can take your athletics and when you're not in season, right? So you have some headway on what you're doing. Um, but you can have various art classes or MUN. And then, um, you take Friday and Saturday community and college classes. And so you really can fill your, if you're a student who wants to fill your time, it, you can do that. And if you're one who does not, and that's not how you want to fill your time, you want to work, you want to do some other, you can do that too. And I think that's the flexibility option. Um, especially on the work side, because there's so much gain from working, that I think that's equally important, like to have those opportunities where people can make the choices, right? Not just the closing the door of it, so.
I think it's great to have those discussions. I would be interested to know how many students would want to take, you know, like eight classes. Uh, but also, I think that's part of the responsibility of the, the adults in the conversation. That I mean, a lot of us say as adults, if only we had more time in the day. I mean, there is the limit. And so, you know, they may have a lot of interests. But the reality is it would be then become overwhelming.
Right. And I think that's why, you know, even though you could have access and back to the policy itself, even though you could have, you could access more classes, changing the graduation requirement to increase the requirement, you know, correspondingly is not what we're recommend, we're recommending a stat, right? Keeping it what it is, is what we're recommending. Um, and I think, you know, finding other ways by which, um, students could, you know, if the board has interest in us moving ethnic studies up, I think that's something we could discuss. Once we have the opportunity to dig into the actual course and bring this back at that time that the board's comfortable with that. I don't know, is there consensus to move away from global studies as a requirement altogether? Again, that'd be a consensus item that we'd have to know.
I have an interest that shared with member Vickers on moving the enforcement of AB one oh one up as well. Where we're supposed to have it done and have the students in it by twenty twenty five. That's only two school years ahead. So even if we had consensus now and we're able to get something, um, for twenty twenty four, we're still only one year ahead of the dollars. There's also fifty million dollars apportionment grant for those of us to develop the course. So it seems like it would behoove us to start to develop it, take advantage of some of the, the money that was released when the bill was passed and have more time to plan it out to be really effective. So I don't think we should wait too much longer.
Can we put, uh, beginning with twenty nine thirty school year or earlier?
Certainly to take a look at whoever's offered it already. Take a look at.
Yeah, and we have, and that's been, you know, Dr. Mayberry is working on that. But I think I'm looking at number eleven, beginning with the twenty nine thirty school year or before. Or, you know, that would give us, because our plan is to look at it this year, this, this school year to bring to the board for consideration.
For twenty twenty four, fall twenty twenty four.
For the spring, just the curriculum itself.
Okay.
I just thought it fit with the work we've been doing with elements as far as, you know, something concrete.
Yeah.
I think there's consensus for sooner.
Let's, I'll just add, like, I mean, that's good to hear, the, the, the tentative timeline that the, we've worked with a group of teachers on already um, would be to, to dig into the course and see what it might look like and kind of unpack it and bring something forward at near the end of the year within a year of development. So that, that would bring it forward in twenty twenty four. Now, it can be an elective at that point and then a graduation requirement a year later. Or at that point, we can say, you know, let's just make it a graduate, we're starting with it, let's just make it a graduation requirement. But that's kind of the tentative timeline that we've been developing as we've been talking with teachers. Uh, that's their interest as well. Um, is to kind of explore it a little bit more this year and then have a year to really develop it, um, and then start teaching it in fall of twenty twenty four. Either as an elective or a requirement, either one.
And then, does the board want to keep global studies, which isn't a? Do you want to keep global studies in place as a requirement? And, um, kind of like as a space to hold for ethnic studies or to, um, remove it for now?
I think it makes sense to keep it if we're really going to try to do ethnic studies earlier. I was looking at this thinking we weren't doing ethnic studies until twenty twenty nine.
Oh.
Because that's what it says.
Right.
And, uh, so I was thinking.
We're overachievers, right?
Yeah, you, you have to back up four years from that because in order to graduate, you'll have to, you know, the graduating class of twenty nine thirty. So the graduating class, they'll have to have taken it. So you've got to back it up four years. So, um, when you offer it as a freshman class, yeah, so. Well, it's, it's, and the fact is you have to complete that to graduate. So in and of itself.
Yeah, but, yeah. Okay, so we're good with the way it is then? The word before on there.
I don't have any background on what global studies is or what that course is, so I don't feel prepared to take it off the graduation requirement at this point, but I'd be happy to have a more detailed discussion on it at some point.
Yeah, I mean, there are state standards related to their, the loose. Um, there, there is no state requirement for a ninth grade global studies. It's, but it's something that has been in this district for, for a while. It's, we're not uncommon. Um, some local districts require a year, actually a ten credit, um, global studies class. It's a little bit of a mixed, um, you, you taking it, right? So do you want to explain what you do in a class? Probably better coming from you than me.
So, so at other schools, some of the other options they have is they'll teach digital media, citizen tree and stuff like that in that space along with some equity or cultural things as they're global studies. So it's.
Yeah, it's intended to be a multicultural look at the world, but there's also skills that are involved in it, study skills, study habits. Um, it's not. Right, that's why it's a ninth grade. I'm sorry? Not avid, no, 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 no. It's, it's Sunday, we, that's kind of built. We are looking at that class in and of itself, looking at other options and off, things that we can offer at the ninth grade year that would, you know, as we redesign ethnic studies, again, what is that ninth grade class? So I, I would say it's not going to look the same moving forward in the years out as we continue, as we closer ethnic studies. Implementation and if the goal, if the board's goal is for us to, you know, fast track that and try to get to, you know, some, a rough framework this year and then allow the staff next year time to kind of develop it and build it out. Then, you know, this course will just make some minor adjustments along the way. And then it'll eventually, global study will eventually just be gone, right? So it'll be completely replaced, um, if on the track that we'd be on within like two years.
Are there other one semester options of things that ninth graders would love to take? I know, I know half is health, but say this tonight went away, is there a, uh,
No.
Semester thing that could they take ceramics for half, half a year? No.
No, in order to qualify for UC, it has to be a year long. So there's very few, there's very few because in, in order for it to be qualified for UC has to be two consecutive semesters. So.
Say that again slower, sir.
In order to qualify for it as a UC eligible, CSU eligible course, it needs to be two consecutive semesters. So you do not find a lot of semester courses. With the exception of the ones that are dictated, right? Which is economics, government, health is flexible, obviously. And, um, because health's not technically a requirement. Um, but there are very few one semester courses in that way, with the exception of classes that might be doubled up, right? So it might be a class that's offered in a semester that's equal to two classes, ten credits. So, but in, in this case, freshmen typically is pair with hell. I can tell you that is not necessarily what is being discussed. Uh, you know, we have more to discuss because we bring it to curriculum council. But Dr. Mayberry, Dr. Allman, social studies, they are looking at ninth grade. Um, looking at all of the social science classes that we offer our scope and sequence and making adjustments. But again, as it pertains to this topic in terms of graduation requirements, that's, that's, this is a topic for another time on a, an update. Um, because I'm, I think we're heading down a different pathway.
I, I just wanted to mention that there are some semester CTE classes that's due.
Well, and that sounds like something you guys are, can explore further. That, and then, you know, in health, the consent is start, conversation starts in kindergarten. So when they hear it, help, they don't giggle. I'll just throw that in there, even though it's not really appropriate in this moment.
So President Norman, and just to move away from it, when would the board expect an update on this next, on ethnic studies, global studies, social science? Do we have a general timeframe?
Spring.
Spring, okay.
Yeah, when we do, because that's our typical annual process. We'll go through the curriculum council process. We'll have, you know, more updates as we get into the, you know, into this year. Um, and any kind of changes to courses that we're planning on offering would come to the board for proven course catalog, which would be spring, um, for course registration. Every annually, every year, anything that we're going to bring forward, that's when it would come.
Okay, great, thank you.
Have a motion. Stand provisional vote. Okay, all in favor? Good. Um, motion carries four zero one. And this takes us to fourteen G. Um, appointment of the two LBSD board representatives and one alternative representative to serve on the college inquiry advantage board. Clark Osborne, have you received any public comment cards on fourteen G? Okay, thank you. Early, uh, each year in November, two LBSD board members are appointed by our board to serve as representative members of the college inquiry advantage board. A few years back, we started the process of assigning alternates to every committee with board member representation. The reason we vote on the representatives in November and not in our December organizational meeting is to align to the CCA next meeting. All elected governing boards such as ours must by law hold organizational meeting in the window of time as dictated to us, which we do. Members of CCA board are appointed by the elected boards. So, um, it would be more inclusive and would need less explanation of CCA, which is change their bylaws and have new representatives join in January. But since we have a new member sitting here, trying to explain why we're doing it now. For us to be more inclusive in this practice, I suggest that when the board will have a new member sworn in during the organizational meeting in December, then in that November meeting, the board doesn't assign the alternative to CCA, just to make sure you guys, they wanted to be on, they could be on and it'd be inclusive. And remember Kelly's, but I do have his thoughts. Because we still have to, because we still have to vote, because we still have to make the vote on who the members are tonight. So I have his thoughts, but, um, and I'm allowed to have one other board member's thought. The board can then assign, um, all right, so we can then assign the alternative, maybe, I don't know. Maybe you guys can figure out whether you can do that in the next meeting or just have a year where you don't have one alternative, alternative assigned. And Victoria won't get mad at me for suggesting, but this year it's Jan, Jan Vickers and Dee Perry, uh, as representatives and Jim Kelly's been the alternative. Are there any questions, comments before we have a motion to vote on who the members for the twenty twenty three um, board will be or representatives will be? Do you guys have any comments, questions?
Um, I'd just like to say that I would, um, love to continue on this board. I'm most passionate about it. And I spend a lot of time at the different events and working with the people there.
Thank you. And member Kelly expressed that before the meeting, and since he's traveling, that he's interested if either you or member Vickers is, is willing to give him space, um, he'd be interested in filling that space and learning about CCA. So Jan, I don't know if you want to continue or not. Would you like to?
Because of my schedule? I can still do this.
Oh, you couldn't go and do PTA if you, you're scheduled in a lot of that, okay. He was not saying, he was just interested, not.
Yeah, he was the alternate.
Yeah, and I think he got very excited. He's just like, if the two of you are done, you know, he'd be happy to take the space. The representatives for? Yeah, and I'll second that. Okay, because that's what I was, that's what I was getting at. I was just seeing if, yeah, perfect, okay. Yeah, I think just, I just think no alternate right now, just that has inclusivity in it. And the trans, okay, I think you guys can figure that out next week. I did, I second it. So student provisional vote, yes, okay, all in favor? Motion carries four zero one to approve, um, member Perry and member Vickers as the representatives. This brings us to fifteen H, approval of establishment of the annual organizational meeting. May have a motion as second to approve the establishment of this meeting. We don't need to go into details, right? It's just the next meeting. Okay, okay, second, okay. Student provisional vote? Jan and then Kelly. All in favor? Post, motion carries four zero one to approve. And this brings us to fifteen A, board reports. In this section is where our members provide a brief report on their fellow, to their fellow members that falls within the scope of their role as board members for LBSD. And, um, a, a brief, three minutes or less, Clark Osborne, before. No report. That was brief.
Uh, since we met last, I attended the OCSBA joint dinner meeting. Um, a lot of it was about gratitude and Dr. Gloria kindly let me have the book and, uh, it's being used. I also attended the sustainability meeting. Um, one of my favorite things was our adult ed opened a new culinary kitchen in San Juan Capistrano. And I went to the opening and met Chef Clive and the students there are challenged but so excited about having a professional kitchen. And one of the students, um, had, was really good at cutting things small. And I was complimenting him on the little apples he cut to put in my yogurt. And he, you know, he was just glowing and Chef Clive told me that he's nonverbal. But he has gotten so good at this that one day he actually said a sentence. He said, I like this. So it was really sweet, but, um, and Chef Clive's partner told me that he has, he did the middle school class this summer. He's done high school, but he's also opened a number of restaurants and been the head chef, and this is what he loves the most. And he can't wait to get home and talk about the students and what they've done. Um, I also attended the high school PTE meeting. I went to the fentanyl with the sheriff's department and, you know, it's, it's very frightening out there. And I would just recommend all of us have Narcon. I know I have it in my car and in my house. And you can get it without a prescription at CVS or anywhere. I went to the medical innovation research entrepreneurship and saw the finals there. We had from, um, CCA, we had the most students participating. And our students that got to the finals but didn't win, one had, um, their project was called Bio Breast. And it, it had to do with keeping breast milk from going bad and being, looking at the fat cells and having these light sensors so you'd know immediately if it had gone bad. And the other team of ours had something called Toy Box, which was for students, um, maybe on the spectrum. It's something that you could fidget with, but it collapsed so you could keep it in your pocket. It's always really interesting to see all the things that the students come up with. And one set of students that worked last summer actually continued to meet and came up with a plan that they fully developed an app with MedCom and Chalk helped seed them, the money and another, you know, so students are going places with these things. Um, also attended World Kindness Day and I was really proud. Two of our students received Courage to Be Kind awards. One was Anzenette Perlin Lee, who puts others first, always makes friends feel special. And the other one was a fifth grader nominated by the counselor at El Moro, Macy Shear, and she's very empathetic. She is one of those kids that just notices when somebody needs something. So she'll tie some child shoes or she'll notice if they're by themselves. And, uh, the comments about her was she's, she's a shining light and she touches all around her. And she was lovely and I met her mom and her grandma. They were great too. On the, uh, November twenty second, CCA is having their open house at Saddleback from nine to two. Everyone's invited to see their new facilities and. The facilities, um. Ad hoc committee has been meeting and we've toured the four schools and we had really great tours with architect and and staff from the architect's office. And really, really exploring the possibilities. And now they're going to come with the information and Jeff is going to keep everybody in line with knowing that there's only so many millions and. Spread it over the years and get these projects done because some of them are going to have really big price tags. But they, it's allowing the staff to think of what they, you know, any possibilities and then we'll tone it down. That's my term, tone it down, nobody else said that. But I have to say, and Ryan's not here now, but Jeff, that in spite of looking at shortcomings of our sites, the sites, and I heard people going around, the sites look great. And the learning environments are exciting and we've done so much. And certainly I appreciated that within our group to the architects as a solicited input to know we've really redone that, like the elementary libraries. And they're set and we're good with those as they are, so that was, it was really, I appreciated that. Jeff conducted a J F M C meeting and he's really been working on going through all the object codes. And it's like, I know we're going to have a test soon, but it's, it is, it is really an important thing to help everyone understand. So I appreciate that also. And I just would comment, it's interesting how sometimes things come full circle. The Sunshine School that we're now adding into our partnership, that was the Methodist Preschool Daycare Center that I worked at for eleven years as a director. When we were next door to Aliso Elementary School. And now they're going to have another preschool in the same facility. So it's, and when we, when I was there for several of the years, we were the lab school for R O P for their childcare training positions. So we had a gal came in and used one of our rooms and taught students from the high school, a number of whom then I hired, so.
Thank you for that. And then I did get to attend the Teacher of the Year Award, but our teacher was. Much, much more rewarding and important than and could not wait. So that was wonderful. And then I did travel to D C and went to sedition trial, sedition trial, which was interesting. It has nothing to do with this, but was fascinating to see how fragile democracy is. But I want to thank all of you for making me feel appreciated and for over the years and the tenure of how important this work is. Like been reminding me of that quite often of how important that work is. And I'll miss working alongside people who live the L B S D commitments and all their vulnerability following forward. And helping each other in relationships, getting back up and all your focus on all the students. And I'm glad I come to work every day as for you guys. You guys all model what's best in education and what's best in humanity. And so I wish all the principals are over here and that goes to all the staff because they really do. So I always, I always remind people that educators are taking care of other people's kids. Like that's what they chose for profession, it's for me, it's a fascinating that that's what they chose for a profession. That's what they wanted to do is care for other people's kids and I'm forever grateful if that's what you guys chose. I, the, the, a consistent question that was often asked of me besides around police and that kind of stuff and things that happen more in high school and dress code. Was why do you always talk about the law? Laws that govern us. And so I just thought for the record, following open meeting laws as they're written provides us complete and absolute transparency. Which is the foundation of our elected role. And secondly, we all take an oath to uphold the constitutions of the United States and of California, so I had to read Californias. Before I could take my, this is like all scared when I first did it, so I can't take an oath if I don't know what it says. And the rule of law is developed from our constitutions and is the foundation of our democracy. So to faithfully execute our duty, we must hold the rule of law as highest pinnacle. We can't intentionally or unintentionally bend, abuse, ignore or violate the laws without weakening democracy as a whole. So it only works because we, law only works because we all say it works. Thus the rule of law is the core of this role, the core of our integrity. And it's important to me personally in my life. And it's been an honor to serve with all of you, it's been an honor to serve you all. And. Not like that, it may remind me of crying. And all the students, the teachers, employees, my fellow board members, thank you for, for everything. And lastly, Jason, you are my favorite employee. The board only has one. So it makes it really easy. However, being a fifth of your boss was easiest thing ever, since your key strength basically just says, here is a challenge. And I get out of your way and you excel at it. And it's the easiest, easiest person to employ and it has been a pleasure working with you. At that, the time to give a report?
No, no special meetings. Well, on Thursday at eleven, no. No, no report.
You should type that in there. Okay, the next regularly scheduled meeting will be held in person at Thurston Middle School without me in the library on December fifteen, twenty twenty two. And it will be the annual organizational meeting of the board. May have a, actually, I will motion to adjourn and may have a second. You can vote now, you're allowed to say no, no, I don't want to leave, no. As a reminder, B B ninety two hundred. Oh, fine, I supposed to read that beforehand, so all those in favor, I, okay. Motion carries four zero one, meeting is adjourned at eight forty nine P M. Sorry for running a longer meeting than normal. It's good conversation.